We're going to begin the meeting now.
Sorry to interrupt.
I can't hear.
We're going to start the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Before we go over the items on the consent agenda, just a couple of quick reminders of our COVID rules. We are meeting in person and we welcome the public to join us, but we ask that you allow us to keep doing this by wearing your mask the entire time. Make sure it covers both your nose and your mouth. We've got our seats spaced six feet apart, so please sit in the seat and don't move those around. If you're in a family together, you can sit together a little bit closer, but other than that, please sit in the seats without moving them around. I don't think we need any overflow, so we're good tonight. If you haven't been in this room before, the restrooms are between those two double doors down on your left, and there's two doors to get out of here. We have had some issues with our technology, but hopefully those have been remedied. We've got these microphones so that the folks in the room can hear us, and that should help with audio on the live stream. We've got two cameras now, one that's focused on the council, one that's focused on the podium, so hopefully that will improve the experience for the millions of people that are watching.
And millions.
And millions that are watching at home and sports bars all across the country. So we welcome the people watching.
And the world.
Yes, and all over the world. So with that, I will go over the items on the consent agenda. Item one is approval of the minutes from your planning retreat back in January. Item two is approval of your regular meeting minutes from the February 1st regular meeting. Item three is approval of the workshop minutes from your February 15th workshop. That was your joint workshop on the TIA with the Planning and Zoning Board. Item four is approval of the special meeting minutes from February 8th, which is a meeting that we had to discuss a closed session matter. These are the open session minutes. And in all of our excitement today, we did not get the closed session minutes ready for you, so we'll just have the closed session minutes for the April meeting. So I'll ask you to take item five off of the consent agenda, and we'll put that on the April 5th meeting agenda. You can still approve the open session portion under item four. Item six on the consent agenda is something that we do every year, and that is our annual Arbor Day proclamation, proclaiming March 20th, 2021 as Arbor Day in Belmont. That's one of the requirements of our Tree City USA designation. Item seven is something that comes to you pretty regularly as well, and that is a request to declare, I believe, five vehicles and allotting tower from the Public Works Department as surplus vehicles and equipment, and we would then auction those off on the govdeals.com website. Item eight on the consent agenda, something we discussed at the planning retreat also. And it is a three-year operating agreement with the Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation for the kayak rental program at the Kevin Lofton Riverfront Park. This is something that the Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation wanted to try last year as a pilot program. They reported great success with it, and they wanted to continue that for three more years. So that agreement is in your consent agenda. And then item nine comes to us from the Main Street Program. It is a request to apply for a grant with the North Carolina Certified Local Government Grant Program. As you know, one of the goals of the Main Street Program is to have some design guidelines for new development in the downtown area. So we'd need to hire a consultant to help us come up with those architectural standards and design guidelines so that any new development downtown is keeping in spirit with what is currently downtown. That grant is a request for $15,000 from the state, which would require $10,000 from the city. If awarded, then that $10,000 will need to be funded in the upcoming fiscal year. So there's no impact to the current fiscal year's budget for that grant request.
Okay.
And finally, on the consent agenda, is approval of a prequalification policy for first-tier subcontractors with construction manager-at-risk contracts. And this is part of our Recreation Center project. Assistant City Manager Kevin Kraus is here and can explain that a little bit more.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So as we move closer to the construction of our new Recreation Center, the general statutes provides a process for prequalifying the construction bidders. This is needed so we can ensure the bidders are reputable and that they also have the capacity to complete a project of this scale successfully. So on your agenda packet on page 79, you'll see the, it outlines the general statutes for prequalification. So tonight, what we're here to do is just pass the policy. You'll see that in Section 2, subsection B, that requires us to adopt that policy. In pages 80 through 82, that suggested policy, Mayor Protim gave me a few changes that he recommended in their, not substantive nature, so to speak, so it would not change this policy. They're mostly grammatical. So I'm here for any questions that you may have on that.
And so just to be clear, in order to proceed with this as a prequalification, construction manager-at-risk, you need to have the policy, and we didn't have the policy. And so if this is to enact the policy, then we can proceed with the rest of the statutory requirements.
Correct, and it allows the manager to form a subcommittee that will put those standards in place that will be used to prequalify those candidates.
Okay. Very good.
Any questions on that or any other item on the consent agenda?
I did have a couple of questions on the kayak rental agreement. Just, I guess, as long as Parks is okay with it. I noticed that Riverkeeper can terminate for any reason upon 30 days' notice, but the city can only terminate for breach. Are we okay with that?
I did think we changed that.
I thought we had to.
I thought we were going to make it reciprocal, 30 days each party.
We can certainly make that change.
Because I think it's basically the same thing, because another thing I'd point out is Section 8.3 says "The terms and conditions of this agreement shall not be divulged to any third party without prior written approval from both parties." And I just point out that it's available on the website with the agenda packet, so it's hardly confidential.
It is a public document.
Yes.
I had a, if, I just had a question on what our processes are for surplus vehicles. Because we see them coming from different departments. Is there somebody that oversees that? Is it at a department-department level? Who decides when it's time to get rid of a vehicle and what's the kind of the matrix around that decision-making process? And we don't have to cover that tonight, but I would like to see that going forward, assuming that you don't have it available right now.
The short answer is the department had submitted their request to me, then I submitted to you. That is when a piece of equipment or a vehicle has been kept in our fleet past its useful life, and it would cost more to repair it and keep it going than it would be to replace it. So it's no longer of value to us. So there's a process in the general statutes that we have to declare it surplus and then offer it via auction. We can't just sell it to somebody. So there's a process for disposal of city property. If you want more detailed information, we can discuss it at a workshop.
It's just, you know, sometimes it's a car with 50,000 miles, sometimes it's a car with 200.
It all depends on the use of the department.
Adrian, regarding the Main Street Program's Certified Local Government Grant to develop with Architectural Design Guidelines, is that, are those suggestions or is that enforceable?
I would ask our Downtown Director, Phil Bogan, to please come forward and answer your questions, because he would know better than me.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In developing the guidelines, we would work with the planning department and any of you to be part of the team and working with a consultant. And so for us, it would be putting forth some design guidelines that we would just, you know, use as strictly just guidelines to provide, you know, property owners with some guidance on treatments and protocols for their historic properties. Now, it would be up to the council or working with the zoning, if they wanted to take it further as far as adopting them as part of the nine-use code or having more regulatory authority. But for us, it would just strictly be something that, you know, is providing some options for property owners.
Okay, well, the reason I asked has just caught my eye, because if I'm not mistaken, the legislature stripped our ability to enforce any kind of architectural guidelines. So seeing that, I was just wondering if somehow the Main Street was able to circumvent that at all.
For us, it would be advisory.
Okay.
So we don't have authority to regulate architectural standards for single-family homes or duplexes, but we can for commercial properties or multifamily properties.
So if we wanted to, we could actually give these guidelines some teeth.
Yes, you could adopt them as part of the, I guess it would be the building type section of the Land Development Code.
Yeah, within the reforming standards, if you go to the public front.
As a zoning text amendment.
Okay.
That concludes our consent agenda. Let's call the meeting to order if we can. And I'm going to ask Jim Heffron to do the invocation and Martha Stoudt to do the pledge of allegiance for us. Jane.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we continue to thank you for the blessings you've bestowed on us, our continued health and perseverance. We're thankful that we have the mayor back with us this evening, and we continue to pray for the health of all those in our city and that we continue to persevere and have patience as we approach perhaps the light at the end of the tunnel of these trying times. We also ask for your guidance and for you to bestow wisdom on us in all of our deliberations here tonight. We ask all these things through your grace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing I want to do is thank everybody that said prayers for us. My wife was very sick. We almost lost her a couple of weeks ago, and we really appreciate it. This is the toughest disease I've ever had to deal with. I've never had anything like this, but it's been very, very tough. Now, we have a special award here we're going to give for Wesley Clinton. Corky? Yes, Wes, here? Yeah, there he is. Good.
Wes, you want to come on up? Mayor, Council, those of you in attendance elsewhere. I'm Corky Falls, the Assistant Police Chief of the Police Department here. We had an employee who went above and beyond the call of duty. We had a, we had a call from him on January 22nd, about 9:00 in the morning. He called Arthur Pullen, who's also here, and told us about a hit-and-run driver at Park Street, Wilkson Boulevard. And that led us into catching him, because Wes kept him in touch with him, following behind him, I don't know why he was working. And we were able to make contact with him, and this person not only left the scene of a wreck, but was impaired. We were able to, such quickly, charge him with DWI and arrest him. Then the officer off the building, it would be Officer McSine, amongst other officers, looked at the car a little more closely, and it appeared that from the damage to the vehicle, other than the collision it was in, Wilkson Boulevard, it may have been another collision. So we started contacting other agencies, and that led us to CNPD where we learned that there was a pedestrian struck who was not only injured, but ended up in a fatality, which was sad for the family. And we wanted to thank and recognize Wes here for what he done. A lot of times, we rely on the citizens and the public to help us out. But I feel like we have a really good working relationship with all the departments. I thought it'd be honorable for him to be recognized for what he did that day that led the family to have some closure on that. Not only that, but protect the sense of interior in Belmont because the person was impaired basically all day. So I'd like to read this to you and then present it to you. Do on whom these presents may come, be it known that in recognition of the attainment and exercise of the role of the public works employee in their personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina and the citizens of Belmont whom they serve, the City Manager of Belmont and Chief of Police, Belmont Police Department, Chad Hoss, does hereby plead the honor and recognition of this occasion for service on above and beyond the call of duty hereby awarded to Wes for outstanding performance by notifying the police on a hit-and-run that led patrol to locate the vehicle and making arrests for DWI. The arrests also subsequently assisted CNPD with a hit-and-run fatality and testimony thereof on the first day of March of year 2021 in the city of Belmont, North Carolina, United States of America. Wes, congratulations.
And Wesley, aren't you a volunteer with New Hope Fire Department? Is he a volunteer with New Hope Fire Department? Are you a volunteer with the fire department?
Officer.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. On the regular agenda, we have one person signed up for public comment, and that's via email. That's Delta Sanders.
Should we do the consent agenda first?
Need to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve minus item.
Let's include the two changes in the, with the two changes Councilman Heffron said on the kayak rental agreement and withdrawing the nonconfidential and making the reciprocal 30 days.
And withdrawing item five is.
And withdrawing five.
I second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay. All right, very good. Next item is item number two, and we're going to entertain a motion to defer until April.
Wait a minute. I was going to go to public comment.
Public comment, I'm sorry. Going to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, I believe, one public comment that was submitted via email. Before I do that, I'm just going to let Wes know that he's, he and his family are welcome to leave. So also, I meant to go over this on the workshop or the work session, but you do have a draft CIP for your reading pleasure over the week. So public comment from Delta Sanders, the Board Chair for Elements of Empowerment Incorporated. Elements of Empowerment expresses our appreciation to the city of Belmont as we jubilantly commemorate your 10 years of sponsoring partnership and the 10th anniversary of the Belmont Juneteenth Celebration. Due to COVID restrictions, we will enhance and continue the virtual celebration format that we use in 2020. The week-long celebration will include proclamations, virtual family and friends freedom walk, virtual parade with professional floats, live and virtual concert in Stowe Park. Those portions that will be live will be socially distanced with spectators allowed as COVID restrictions permit. Specifically to commemorate the 10th anniversary of the Belmont Juneteenth Celebration, we plan to produce a documentary to tell the history of the event. The city of Belmont became a cultural leader in Gaston County when it enlisted a group of volunteers to plan and execute the first Belmont Juneteenth Celebration. The documentary will tell this story as well as chronicle the growth and development of the celebration itself. Through interviews, voice-overs, photo montages, and video, the Belmont Juneteenth Celebration will transition from an idea to the signature cultural festival of the county. The recounting of the event history will simultaneously recount and incorporate Belmont Black history. Among others, Ann Cook Young, Reverend Charles Reed, and Mary McLean are part of the Belmont Juneteenth Celebration narrative. The time to capture this essential content is now. The limitations otherwise imposed by COVID will make this opportunity uniquely possible and all the more important. Upon completion, the film will be a historic account and a marketing tool. Most of all, it will be a gift that celebrates the partnership of city and community to foster cultural awareness, acceptance, and preservation. Elements of Empowerment Incorporated hereby request the continued support from the city of Belmont as detailed in our proposal for continuation of sponsoring partnership. Thank you again for 10 years of support and celebration of Juneteenth. Sincerely, Delta P. Sanders, Board Chair. And I've included the sponsorship request. We couldn't get that on the agenda for tonight, so it'll be on your agenda for April 5th.
Okay.
I believe those are all the public comments.
It's hard to believe that's been 10 years, though. Time flies so fast, so fast. Okay. All right. Now, next item is on the item number two.
So item two is picking up from an item that was deferred from last month's meeting agenda for tonight, and that is a rezoning ordinance for the Smith Farm community. This was something that you discussed last month. You were not comfortable with the rezoning, conditional zoning as presented. You asked the applicant to go back and try to amend the plan and come back to you tonight. The applicant has been working with the property owner and staff to come up with an option that would be beneficial both to the property owner and hopefully to a majority of the city council, but they're not quite ready to do that tonight. So they're asking for one more month, and would ask that you vote to defer that to the April 5th agenda.
Is there any limit on how many times we can continue it?
No. I feel like they'll be, I feel like they'll present next month.
Okay. Just, I mean, we've got a Dell Web probably next month as well, so it could be another long meeting. Fortunately, the curfew's been lifted, so we can stay as long as we need.
And assuming that the Dell Web property moves through, so there's a community meeting this week on that, it's scheduled to go to the planning board this month, assuming that the planning board takes action on it and will come to you in April. That will likely be a long discussion, so I would suggest that we have that at the workshop in April, which I believe is the date of the workshops. I'll find the date of that workshop.
Have the approval process for it during the workshop or discussion?
To, instead of having a regular workshop, have a special meeting just for the public hearing and consideration of the Dell Web project.
Nineteen.
Which would be April 19th. That way, you can still have all the other agenda items for April 5th. Otherwise, we'll be here very, very, very late. But we'll let you know what the planning board does before we make those recommendations.
So do we need a motion to have a continuance?
Yeah. Motion to defer till April 5th.
Okay, I'll make a motion to defer the Smith family property.
Continuation.
Continuation till April.
Till April 5th, okay, that's fair. All right.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Public hearing for the Woodlawn Industrial Park.
Well, I think we have an annexation.
What number?
Three.
Number three.
Oh, the fifth, oh, continuation, okay, I'm sorry.
So similarly, since the applicant would only request annexation upon approval of the rezoning, he doesn't want to be annexed yet. So we would ask, you're technically still in the public hearing for the annexation of the Smith family properties. We would ask that you continue that public hearing until April 5th as well.
Do we have to open it?
No, you're still in it, so it's a motion to continue it to April 5th.
All right, I move to continue the public hearing on the annexation of the Smith Farm, Smith family property until April 5th, 2021.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item, move on, move along here. Item number four. Public hearing for the Woodlawn Industrial Park. Request to amend and approve conditional zoning district to allow additional land and building square footage to be added to the property site.
Move to go into public hearing?
I'm mostly going to public hearing, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in public hearing, okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As read into the record, this is zoning map amendment 201905A. This is a request to amend and approve business campus development conditional zoning district. Their request includes adding approximately 19 acres to the district. It includes increasing the building area by 20,000 square feet. It includes changes to the actual schematic plan as it relates to the east building location, circulation, and driveway locations. It also includes the addition of sidewalks and an alternative buffer proposed on the east side, which I will go into depth with you. I do want to point out at your spot, you do have a site plan with details at your seat for this case this evening. So just some background on this project. This, the city council approved the conditional zoning district in November of 2019. This conditional district allowed for the development of an industrial business park on 40 acres, allowing up to 600,000 square feet of building area. It included the realignment of Acme Road and Kason Street. It included the closure of a portion of Centerview Street, as well as Jade Circle. It included off-site roadway improvements as tied to the approved traffic impact analysis, and it also included some areas of relief. The project was approved with relief in the... And the focus area of district buffers, parking buffers, and roadway infrastructure in the form of bike lanes and sidewalk. Some mitigation was proposed as conditions of approval, and they stand today, and they were associated with the buffer reductions, and they came in the form of landscape screening. So the plan you see on the screen to the right is the original approval. So let me update you on the project status. The applicant has entered into a brownfield program agreement with the state. They have actually amended their agreement with the state, already adding the additional 19 acres. They have an approved grading plan with the city, and if you've gone by their site, you'll see the site work is currently underway. They have completed the street closure approval for a portion of Centerview Street, as well as Jade Circle. They have received approval of the roadway realignment plans with NC DOT. Again, that's for Acme Road and Kason Street. They have construction plans under review by the city for the west building site, and they're here tonight seeking this amendment for the rezoning action. So the property... So on your screen, you have an aerial photograph that shows the project site. The parcel with the white star is the property proposed to be added. That's an additional 19 acres. Now, that would be added to the east side of the conditional district. Now, refer to the west side and the east side. It's... The site is divided by the railroad right-of-way. So zoning in the area hasn't changed from its initial approval. It's primarily zoning classification, commercial, and there are some residential zoning districts. They tend to be on the west side of the project area. Uses follow the zoning. Uses in the area include commercial, industrial, and institutional. There is a church on the lower right-hand side of... That would be the east side of the development. I think it's West Kataba Baptist Church, I believe. Kataba Heights, I'm sorry. Yes, correct. No, it's Kataba Heights?
No. No, it's...
You thinking of Goshen.
Goshen.
Goshen's on the west side. On the east side, we have...
That's right. Kataba Heights is on the east side.
Yes, correct.
Goshen's on the west side.
Thank you for straightening me out of that. Okay, so you'll see the revised site plan on the screen, and if you'll notice, I don't know if my cursor will work here. There's this dotted line that I'm following. This is the existing boundary, and as you can see, the proposed east building now straddles the property line. Again, they're proposing to add this 19 acres on the east side to the north. That does change the driveway locations. It also moves the site further away from some of our more concerned property owners here. Southern Benedictine Society was concerned about the buffer. There are some intermittent streams on the property as well, so shifting the building up actually enhances the environmental actions taken on this site. I do want to point out, I just brought up this circular area, and I'll go into detail in a minute about it. On the east side, I call this a pinch point. This is where, by shifting the site to the north, it... The... The site here now is about five feet from the property line, and that is Kataba Heights Baptist Church. The site, the church is towards the front of the property. It's completely wooded back there, but they are reducing the buffer from 15 to five feet, and they are proposing an alternative buffer in that location, which you have the detailed plan right in front of you. They have... So first, let me point out a couple of things. So this now is the entire east side, so you have the original parcel with the 19 additional acres. By shifting the property, the building site to the north, it then creates this pinch point here where there's about five feet between the top of a retaining wall and the property line. We use the aerial photograph, so you can see what's on the adjacent property. You have the church property in this heavily wooded area that backs the property. The applicant is proposing to place an eight-foot-high fence on top of the retaining wall. The planning board did talk in depth about this and did support this request of this alternative buffer in that area. The screening, additional screening, would run for about 120 linear feet on top of the retaining wall. This is made out of wood.
And so, just to be clear, even though the church is on the front end of the property and the back area nearby is wooded, because these applicants are the ones that are making the request, and they are the ones that are impinging on the, what would typically be the buffer, even though there's a bunch of woods there, they still have to do the buffer on their property.
That is correct. They are the more intense use, and therefore, they're required to provide the buffer.
Yeah.
Shelley, the biggest complaint I've heard was people trying to get out of Acme Road, because some people have almost been hit coming out of there because the cars speed by there. I mean, they go so fast, you know? But that hill is going to be taken down, I understand, right?
Yes, yes. We can talk further with the applicant about that, but this project does include the realignment of Acme Road that would shift the road to the west, eliminating the site distance issue there. But my understanding, there's some interim steps we would like the applicant to take.
And I don't want anybody to get killed on that road.
For that, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, this was talked in depth by the planning board, and they did vote to support this request of the alternative buffer. So we did check with the Kim Lee Horn, the city's transportation consultants in NC DOT. Because the project is proposing to add additional square footage to the site, we did evaluate its impact. As you recall, there was an approved traffic impact analysis for the original approval. The addition of 20,000 square feet would add an additional 105 average daily trips to the overall number based on a recommendation by Kim Lee Horn and NC DOT. They are recommending that the traffic analysis not be amended. They felt that the approved TIA with its improvement is satisfactory to address this issue.
Well, they're approved... They're seeking 620,000 square feet, but they're not, at this point, intending to use all 600...
That's correct.
They're using 607, but they don't want to have to...
That's correct. They asked to go up to 620, so that's what we based our questions.
But as it's based right now, they're only using 607.
That's correct. So the project also includes sidewalk with the applicant coming forth requesting to amend the conditional district. We were able to negotiate with the property owners to actually construct sidewalk. The initial project did... Was approved with relief, and in this case, the applicant has agreed to do sidewalks on both sides of Kason Street and Acme Road. They were... They are requesting tree, street tree modifications only on the east side of Kason Street and Acme Road, where they don't... Do not have ownership of the adjacent property. This property is located within the business park area of the Mont Cross Small Area Plan, which is in the city's Conference of Land Use Plan. This area is targeted for light industrial use in a business park setting, so this project, as proposed, is consistent in the areas of land use, economy, environment, and intergovernmental relations with the Conference of Land Use Plan. The applicant did hold a community meeting on February 8th. The attendees were limited to the development team and the pastor of Goshen Church with an intended... Intendants as well. Your packet has a copy of the minutes, which there were really no discussions other than the presentation that evening. This item went to the planning board in February. The discussion focused on the buffer, as previously discussed, and the sidewalks. So the planning board did recommend the buffer alternative. They did support it. But with regard to sidewalk, they felt that there is no need for sidewalks on the... On Kason Street on the west side, that's next to the railroad right-of-way. They felt that every... Most of the general public would not choose to walk next to the railroad right-of-way. They would walk on the other side of the street. However, they did recommend extending the sidewalk on the east side of Kason Street to the furthest-most point of their development, and I'll show you that in one moment. And they also recommended the sidewalk on Woodlawn be expanded to eight feet in width. It was approved with a reduction of five feet, and the board recommended it be expanded to eight feet. We have looked at the plan. There's limited area within the right-of-way, but there's from the back of curb to property line. There's about 10 feet total, so the applicant could do the sidewalk, an eight-foot-wide sidewalk from the back of curb towards their property line and still be able to provide the required buffers for screening. So the planning board did request these modifications be entered into the record. They are conditions of approval in front of you this evening. Making... Deciding on those conditions, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval to the city council as amended, and they did make the required findings that it was a reasonable request and consistent with the goals in the area of land use, economy, environment, and intergovernmental relations. Now, this slide here is simply intended to show you... The white lines represent Kason Street. There was sidewalk proposed on both sides. On the east side, it just went up to an out parcel to the north there and stopped. The planning board recommends that that sidewalk extend all the way to the furthest-most north point of their site, and if there's room within the right-of-way, to construct the sidewalk in front of that out parcel as well. They do not own that, but if there's room in front of the... Within the right-of-way, they did ask that they connect it all the way. So that is a condition of approval. So we ask that you receive this recommendation from the planning board to approve as presented here tonight. Of course, the council has the ability to approve as presented, approve with modifications, or this approval with any map amendment. The board will... Is also required to make the required findings that it's a reasonable request in the public interest, and it's consistent with the goals of the adopted Conference of Land Use Plan. So that completes my presentation.
Yeah. Did it give you any indication as to when the hill was going to come down on Acme Road?
No, we can ask the development team for this project is here tonight. We could ask them about that, their timing.
Shelley, when we first heard this, and just refresh my memory, I was wanting the eight-foot sidewalks on Woodlawn, but they said they couldn't do it because of the buffering that was required. That just the numbers wouldn't work. How is it that they can do eight feet now, and we can accommodate that?
Well, they were correct in that if they were going to build the full six-foot-wide street tree landscaping area plus an eight-foot sidewalk, there is not enough room. But what they're proposing is their trees are proposed to be on the backside of the sidewalk. That helps with the screening, and therefore, they have from back of curb all the way to their property line, they have about 10 feet. So again, they can construct an eight-foot-wide sidewalk from back of curb towards their site, and then the street trees would be on the backside of the sidewalk.
Don't you... I mean, I'm just thinking here. Don't you want those trees to be between the traffic and the pedestrians? When they mature, some kind of buffer for the pedestrians?
Well, we evaluated that, and again, you have about 10 feet within the existing right-of-way, and then you... We wanted a 15-foot buffer to provide screening because that is a truck circulation area. So it was determined within the existing right-of-way, they would have a smaller landscape area, and we were concerned about the health of the trees, so the trees actually do better behind the sidewalk, and it also adds to the screening.
All right, well... Okay, I guess that makes sense. I mean, if the trees do better behind the sidewalk, I guess we need to modify our street scape then, based on that. The TIA, it just strikes me as odd. We're adding this square footage in all of these truck bays with an unknown use. These could be tractor trailers, or these could be high-volume pickup and delivery vehicles such as Amazon, let's say. How do we know? How can they forecast 110? Because, you know, trucking is a high-volume business, and delivery is high-volume.
So the original traffic analysis was prepared for a typical industrial office warehouse-type operation. So if, for some reason, they get a high user, so say they want to do a call center or something that is... Has a lot more traffic than we would have to when we do the zoning permit to allow the use, we would evaluate it at that time.
You would evaluate the use or the need for another TIA?
The use that goes in. If the... Remember, the traffic study was done and approved for up to 600,000 square feet of operations for office warehouse. So we did, again, check with NC DOT and Kim Lee Horn about this additional, possible additional 20,000, although they're only showing an additional 7,000 actually being built here. But they provided a little buffer in there. So that's been calculated. So we just strictly looked at the additional trips from what they were approved for and what they want to do, and it only generated that small additional amount. Both NC DOT and our consultant did not feel that an update of the TIA was warranted.
Was Planning Director, you have the authority to override that and require an amended TIA, is that right?
That's correct, and that's why I consulted both of Kim Lee Horn, who are transportation engineers, and I had them calculate how many additional trips that was, and as well as NC DOT. And both of their recommendations were... The way they shared it with me is, even if you had them update the traffic analysis, it's unlikely it would change any of the required improvements.
Okay, so I mean, what I'm getting at is you have the authority to override, but you're comfortable with their recommendations?
I am comfortable with Kim Lee Horn's recommendation, yes.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Just the background on this parcel they're adding. So it was not included in the original conditional district, but it was their property that they're adding to this?
Yes, the 19 acres on the east side to the north. Yes, it's under their ownership. That's correct.
Okay. They just didn't originally include it within the...
That's correct. I'm not sure of the timing when they purchased that.
Okay. And I just wanted to walk through the sidewalk improvements, so I can... So the, you know, generally, let's start with Woodlawn. So it's supposed to be... Ordinance says eight feet. We gave them relief to five. We gave them a relief to five originally, and Planning Board, and, you know, being on the Planning Board at that time, and, you know, transitioning to council, I know that both on the Planning Board and on council, there was a lot of support for an eight-foot sidewalk, and now we're going to get an eight-foot sidewalk on Woodlong.
That's correct.
On Kason, there's going to be no sidewalk originally. Were they going to grade for a sidewalk?
They were going to grade, yes. It would be a path to set us up for a future project if that happened.
And then they said, oh, hey, as a result of these, this amendment, we're going to put a sidewalk on west side and east side up to the edge of the property. And the Planning Board said, well, it doesn't make sense to put one on the west side because that's right near the railroad right-of-way, there are safety problems, whatever. We like it on the east side, but we want you to extend it all the way up to the additional, to the limit of the additional parcel, and maybe go through that other property, that out parcel.
That's correct.
Okay. And then what about the sidewalk as to Acme?
So, Acme's both sides five feet.
And that was the way it was originally going to, that was what was approved in 2019?
No, what was approved on Acme Road was a sidewalk, I believe, on one side, which was the east side, and then the other side would be graded.
And now they're going to put a sidewalk?
Now, they're going to put sidewalk on both sides. That's correct.
Okay, but that wasn't the focus of any discussion?
No, it was not.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I understood the permutations.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else have any questions?
For the sidewalks on Acme and Kason, are those, those are going to be five feet?
Yes, on Acme and Kason Street, they're proposed at five-feet sidewalks, yes.
Is that what's specified in the ordinance? Are we granting them relief for that?
No, it is eight feet. It would be eight feet on the side of the development because it's a non-residential use. So, it would normally be eight feet.
Yeah, okay. Is there room for an eight-foot sidewalk, or like, what's the reason for going down to five?
Well, with the grading and the site plan that's in, I can tell you, there is not, there's not enough room for sidewalks wider than five feet when observing the tree requirements on Acme, on the west side of Acme as well as Kason Street. Part of it is due to the right-of-way width. They have to create turn lanes and driveway locations, so it is just very tight. On Acme Road, there's not even room for street trees on the west side of Acme Road, which is adjacent to other properties that are already developed. So, with the right-of-way width, everything is narrowed down. So, as staff, we were very pleased to be able to negotiate with the property owners to get a five-foot-wide sidewalk that eventually can connect the residential areas.
That's great. So, we also have Scott Borts here.
That's correct.
Trey Little, they're here, as well, if they need to answer any questions.
Yes, absolutely, if you're through.
Well, I've got one more. It may not be a Shelley question, but I'll ask it, and whoever wants to answer it, can answer it. I know we improved, well, we, council approved incentives for this project originally for the two parcels that were originally included. Would this additional parcel, I'm assuming it would not be included in that incentive program, is that correct?
So, the incentive program was based, the part that would be incorporated into the original incentive program is based on the overall increase in the tax base from the building. So, the incremental change in the building size should therefore have a higher tax value, so therefore, the, the property tax grant amount would be, they would be paying more property taxes and therefore get more back any of the years, which is a good point because the document that was approved included a legal description of the property. If this is added to the planned area, we would need to update the exhibit, not the terms of the agreement, but just the exhibit associated with that. So, it would incrementally increase the cost of the tax rebate, only because the property taxes being paid by the developer upfront would be increased.
Okay, okay.
Our code, does it call for eight-foot sidewalks? I believe it does.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, well, I'm glad we're getting the eight-foot sidewalks on Woodlong, because I was uncomfortable with the five-foot. But I think what this may highlight to all of us is that if we stick with our codes, we may get what our code says, because this is not undoable and apparently is not a deal breaker, because I think that was some of the gist that the five-foot sidewalk would have, would have put this project in peril.
Anything, any other? Well, we do have the applicant here, we have two people signed up. I think they're both with the applicant, Scott Borts and Trey Little, and I think we probably do have some questions, at least as to the Acme Road intersection, so if we have either of those gentlemen here available to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, hello, Mayor, just stepped away. Council, I'm Scott Borts with Belmont Industrial LLC. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I think the mayor's question, and we've heard from some residents too, was just about that intersection of Acme and Woodlong, and one of the benefits of this project was that it was going to realign that intersection because it's, you know, it's been cited as a dangerous intersection, and I think the question was, you know, the timing, when is Acme Road going to be realigned, and then are there going to be any interim measures that can be taken until such time that it can be?
Right. I think the report might have been erroneous on the news, because they, they stated as if the road was staying where it was, and I think everybody here knows Acme's being moved to the west, which was done intentionally to have a better sightline for folks around that corner.
Yes.
In addition, there's, as many of y'all know, there's a mound, a current mound there, and we're taking that down 20 feet. So, I think, I think the situation's going to be rectified after our construction's done. As far as timing, we have our plans in right now for approval. I mentioned that to Adrian Miller the other day, he wanted to know about the timing. So, as soon as our plans are approved, that would be one of the things that we can focus on. I can't give you an exact date, because I don't have, you know, I'm relying on other people to prove things.
Yeah. So, the mound, does that need approval? Taking the height off the mound, does that need approval?
That's a 20-foot reduction in the current mound.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And was there anything of trimming trees on the other side, or is that on the west side? There's?
Well, where the mound is, if there are any trees in that mound, since we're taking them down, any trees that are there will be taken down too. So, there really will be a clear sightline between the new Acme Road and Woodlong. Another, another aside on that is Goshen has a curb cut that is right next to Acme Road. DOT asked us to approach the church and see if they would be interested in closing that drive. They did agree to do that, and so that also helps with safety.
Any other questions?
Will, done. Do we have a motion to come out of public hearing?
I'll make a motion to come out of public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, right of public hearing. Next item, to consider the adoption of an ordinance approving Woodlong Industrial Park, modifying the approved BCD conditional zoning district.
I had one question before we get into that. I swear, the ordinance says that we are relocating the west building, and I thought it was the east building that we were going to relocate. Yes, it does, and the, and the second whereas, it says west building relocation, and I was under the impression it was the east building that was relocating.
That is correct. It's the east building.
Okay. Then we would need to, if we were to approve, we would have to approve that amendment? That's what I'm here for. Anyone have any other?
I have some comments, and I think it's, I think it's fantastic what's happening there.
Yeah.
We've, every retreat, we're talking about business development, or bringing somebody in to help recruit businesses, and we got somebody here, Will, and to put 50 to 60 million dollars in our community, and it doesn't involve apartments or tract houses. I think it's fantastic. I think it's going to make it safer up there, and the sidewalks will be great for the residents around there. There'll be some truck traffic, and that's a good sign of a vibrant economy, so I'm very supportive, and I know these guys probably haven't heard it, but thank you for investing all this money in our community. Appreciate it.
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
I'll see if anybody else has any other comments.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay.
Oh, well, do you want to make the?
I'll make a motion to approve with the amendment of west building being changed for east building.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
I would move that we find this to be a consistent, reasonable request and consistent in the public interest and consistent with the goals of our comprehensive land use plan in the areas of land use, economy, environment, and intergovernmental relations. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a land that Doug Gad lived in on 304 South Central Avenue, is a local historic landmark. And we have several people that are here on that program right there, but do I hear a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in public hearing, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hey, Melissa.
Tonight, we have before you, the property at 304 South Central Avenue is up for consideration as a local historic landmark. This property is known as the Charles T. and Beatrice Chafin Stowe House, and there's an extensive historical report linked in your agenda. This house was built between 1932 and 1935, and is known as a classic example of a Tudor revival-style dwelling. When a property is considered for local historic landmark status, it is, is an effort that is spearheaded by the Gaston County Historic Preservation Commission. What's new in the process is that our own Belmont Historic Preservation Advisory Board is now involved, and they heard this item at their February 10th meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval to the city council. We are here before you tonight, and we also coordinate with the county commissioners, so they will hear this item at their March 23rd meeting and have a public hearing as well. So, it's a well-coordinated effort with all parties involved. Again, we have the public hearing tonight, and the next item on your agenda is to vote to adopt the ordinance designating the property. So, tonight, we have both the chairman, John Russell, of the county historic preservation commission, and Ms. Lucy Penniger is here as well, stand by to answer any questions or concerns.
I had a question, and I think, well, I think, are you going to read into the record regarding the ownership, but before that, my question is, are there any standards we have to adhere to or findings we have to make, or is it like, we think it's a good idea, so, okay?
So, yes, state statutes do dictate the process, but what is important is that in the ordinance that you have, that we have hit the key components in the ordinance. So, we do make sure that it is coordinated properly, that the hearing, the public hearing is properly advertised.
But I mean, like, what do we have to, like?
Are there any findings?
Yeah, I mean, do we have to say, well, it's significant architecture? Or do we have to say, well, it's, it's, you know, it meets this factor, or, I mean, what are, what are the, what are the guidelines for us?
Right, so, the good is that the Historic Preservation Commission at the county level really dives in and vets and makes sure that there is significant historical, cultural significance to the property. There is a professional report that's involved, so that by the time it does get to council, you have these groups certify, or attesting to the significance. So, yes, you'd only want to take this action if it were historically significant.
Does it meet the criteria for a historical house?
Yes.
So, we're voting on their recommendation being handed down to us, is that right?
When we've done it in the past, they have the process, and they have the board, and they have all that stuff, and then they vote and send it to us, and in the past, we hadn't had a board or anything like that, so whatever their standards were, we just upheld.
But our board approved it as well?
Yes, which is new, so this is the first time for that, so I would imagine that their standards are similar to the county standards.
Well, I see, I see Attorney Russell.
Mr. Russell can give you a detailed presentation on the history of this property.
Where's the salt shaker?
John, let me ask you a question just right up front. Are they asking us to affirm these findings, basically?
Great, too. So, the way that the process works is that you all act independently. It's a joint public hearing, it's just done in sequence, so there's several steps that you have, that have, the property and this project has to go through before it gets to you, including the property owner comes to the Historic Preservation Commission to express interest in having the property designated. We then do an investigation as to whether it has cultural, architectural, historic, or archaeological significance, and it has to sort of be special significance, so we'll look into that. We'll have a report prepared, in this case, so that was done. Once that's done, we vote, we beating the Historic Preservation Commission. The report gets sent to Archives and History in Raleigh, and they comment on it and add it, and then when that happens, when all that's come through, it has to come to both the municipality, to Belmont in this case, and then, secondly, to Gaston County, and you have to find, based on looking at the report, that there is either architectural, historic, cultural, or archaeological significance, and that's in your judgment, you know, you all are sort of the judge of that, but hopefully, the report is helpful and guiding, and that it's worthy of status as a local landmark. And so, then if it meets both criteria, if it passes both at the municipality and at the county level, then it's recognized as a local landmark, it is eligible for historic tax credits, so there's a 50% reduction on the local property taxes. And in addition, if you want to make any, if the owners want to make any changes to the property, they would have to come to the Historic Preservation Commission for a certificate of appropriateness, so any changes to the exterior, we're not going to tell them how to decorate the property or what to do on the inside, but if you want, any changes to the exterior would require a COA in addition to any zoning approval or building code approval from the county. I don't know if that answered your question, but there is the process. There's not any specific findings of fact that you have to make to do it, but it does require, since it's, you all have independent judgment as well, that you feel like knowing your community that this particular property has historic or architectural significance that's worthy of a designation and is worthy of both the responsibilities and the benefits that come with that.
Yeah. John, I've heard the property's been sold, but the new people are aware of what needs to be done as far as the score?
Yes, sir. The city attorney contacted us last week, Mr. Wilson, and brought that to our attention, which we did not know, or at least I did not know. So, I had the pleasure of talking with the Hairs over the weekend.
Yeah.
They're very supportive of this process. We're happy that it is underway and are, you know, happy to be in Belmont, really like the house.
So, they knew the rules, all like good stuff.
Sir?
They know the rules and everything.
They did, so I explained to them the process, as well as what the responsibilities and benefits that would come with them, if it come with it, if it was approved. I believe they, I then asked, we were asked to have them put something in writing so that you all would have that for the record, and I believe that's been provided to the city manager today, if I'm not mistaken. Have talked to them, and I believe they've, and I think I answered all the questions that they have about the project. Have talked to them, and I believe they've, and I think I answered all the questions that they have about the process as well.
Anybody have any other questions for John?
No, I've got one for Parks. And this may be nothing, but it's better to know than not know. When I was on the Historic Belmont Foundation, on their committee for the home tour, this was on the home tour, and I did the research at the courthouse on this house and brought forward all the historical information on it for the home tour. There's no, there's no reason why I can't vote, is there?
No.
I guess if Adrian would, I don't think there's any questions, but if you want to read the letter into the record that we received from the current property owners?
So we do have one comment for public hearing from the current property owners, so I'll read those into the record, as I did during a public comment. Greetings, and this is from the new owners, Kristen Moyer and Charles Hare. Greetings. My husband and I purchased the home located at 304 South Central Avenue last week. We have been informed by the sellers, Douglas and Nancy Gad, that it is in the process of being considered for historic designation. I also spoke with John Russell of the Gaston County Historic Preservation Commission about tonight's meeting. We are thrilled to be the owners of this historic home and very much wish to proceed with the applications submitted by the Gads. We are hopeful that the city council and county commission will designate this property as a local historic landmark. We fully wish to preserve the unique character of this home and will abide by the guidelines set forth to preserve its architectural integrity. If there's anything else we can do to ensure that this home is designated as a historic property, please not hesitate to let us know. Best regards, Kristen Moyer and Charles Hare.
Okay. Thank you. Good. Well, I think it good tributes, so I think we should do this.
Yeah, it's my favorite house in Belmont. I wanted to buy it myself years ago, so I did not get to. One thing I will say, though, that's of interest, is that the lady's name, Beatrice, she never went by that name. She went by the name Pete. So obviously, she did not like Beatrice. Pete was what I called her.
Anyone want to make a motion to come out of public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion to come out of public hearing, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve by Ryan Schrift, seconded by Martha Stowe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Very good. Alright, thank you. Next item is item number eight, a public hearing on Prince Street property. And I think Parks is gonna take over this.
Yeah, go ahead and have a motion to go into public hearing.
Pardon me?
Have a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
On any second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in public hearing.
Okay, y'all are familiar with these quasi judicial proceedings that we've had before, sort of courtroom-like? Process where we'll have parties, witnesses, cross-examination, not bound by the rules of evidence. And we'll have testimony from witnesses, opportunity for cross-examination by their attorney, and then questions from the council, since you sit as both judge and jury. And then at the end of the public hearing, when we go into deliberation, if you, or if you choose to, well, you'll be voting on required findings to determine whether you approve it or not. So with that being said, I guess, who's presenting? Peyton, okay. Come forward, Peyton. And John, do you have a witness? Okay, Andrew, Mr. Limberger. Okay, come on, come forward. Let me go ahead and get you all to take your oath. Are you going, okay. That's right. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. And you swear firm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth of God. Thank you. We don't go by the formal rules of procedure, like I said. So we present direct testimony in narrative form. So Ms. Ratchford, if you want to proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Peyton Ratchford. I am the planning technician with the City of Belmont, and tonight I'll be presenting on a special use permit, 2021.01. So as right into the record, this is a request to allow the subdivision of two existing parcels into three fifty-foot wide lots. This is required due to section 5.424 of the Land Development Code. This is regarding infill lots that are proposed with lot widths less than the average lot width. Within three hundred feet or one block length are subject to approval of this special use permit. In this case, the three hundred foot wide buffer is sixty-one point six feet, and the average block length for lot width is seventy-five feet. The applicant tonight is Andrew Limberger with Andrew Limberger Builders LLC. And representing him tonight is John H. Russell, Jr. of Mullin, Holland, and New York. So this site is located at 115 and 117 Prince Street. The PID numbers are 301-930 and 301-931. The current zoning is general residential. So some site background on this is that the lots, there were originally three lots facing Hall Street. These lot widths consisted of fifty feet, fifty feet, and one seventy-five foot lot. The applicant then decided to recombine those into two seventy-five foot wide lots facing Prince Street. And tonight, he is seeking three fifty-foot wide lots facing Prince Street. The total site consists of point six acres, about a third of an acre each, and the lots are currently vacant and wooded. You can see the site here is designated by the White Star. So the area around the site, so most of the lot widths range from forty linear feet to three hundred and forty-seven linear feet. There is a little bit of outlier. You can see it is right up here. With the acreage of one point two four, the smallest lot in this area is about a tenth of an acre or so. This is the proposed site plan, three, again, fifty-foot wide lots facing Prince Street. He's proposing three single-family dwelling units with detached garages in the rear with driveways that lead back to those garages. In regards to the comprehensive land use plan, special use permits do need to comply. This area is in the downtown neighborhood, so it targets a variety of residential and non-residential uses, normally follows a grid pattern, and supports future development and both infill and redevelopment. Currently, the existing neighborhood is either vacant lots or a variety of single-family homes, some older and smaller homes, but also there are newer and larger homes. It's a kind of blended community. The applicant is proposing three fifty-foot wide lots, about two tenths of an acre. He's proposing three single-family homes back there with cementitious and other approved building materials. Special use permits are based on three findings. And as right into the record, these three findings are that the use meets all required principles and specifications of the Land Development Code and any adopted land use plans. The proposed plan, if developed according to the plan submitted and approved, will be visually and functionally compatible to the surrounding area, and the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety and will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property located where proposed. It is the applicant's task to prove these findings, and that can be found in, on page one hundred and sixty-nine of your staff report. Some considerations for this special use permit. If approved, staff recommends five conditions of approval. These conditions of approval, I'll read into the record, are the applicant shall process a minor subdivision plat in compliance with section 1.3 of the Land Development Code. The residential unit shall be connected to municipal water and sanitary sewer as approved by the city engineer. The residential unit shall adhere to renderings at the council meeting. Wall cladding shall be cementitious, fiberboard, brickstone, or similar material. Vinyl material may be used as trim only. Number four is a special use permit shall be valid for one year, and the applicant shall adhere to the erosion and sediment permit plan approved by Gaston County throughout the entire development process. With that, I would like to enter my staff report and presentation into the record, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have it.
I have a question, too.
Excuse me. Can we take, I need to, I need to pause just a minute. Before our next, before council questions, we have cross-examination. Before we do that, I need to go back and insert two questions to the panel that I omitted. One, do any of you have any financial or pecuniary interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
And second, is there any other reason why you'd be unable to render a fair and impartial verdict based solely on the testimony that's being presented here tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so did that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Russell, cross.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just trying to get through the presentation. I do have two questions to ask you. The current value for these three properties is general residential.
That's accurate.
So the use of the property will stay consistent with the Land Development Code?
Yes.
Okay. And I think you showed us the comprehensive land use plan. Staff has looked at the comprehensive land use plan?
Yes, they have.
Alright. And did you find the, I'm in trouble with being either too loud or too quiet. The proposal here is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Did staff find out?
Yes.
Your site plan showed at the very end of Prince Street, I don't, you don't have it up now, and then around the corner on Johnson Street, there's already apartments in place, that they're already developed with apartments. Is that right? The bottom part of the map? Yes, ma'am. Okay. And so the smaller lot size and the development would be consistent with some of the development that's already there. Is that fair? It looks like going down on Prince Street, I guess, to the north, even with the smaller development, the lot width is going to be similar to what's there on Prince Street. Is that true? In terms of lot size, and then is the frontage, as you go north on Prince Street, also in the fifty-foot range? Is that what the applicant's proposing? And the depth, I think you said, is a hundred and seventy-five feet on the lot. So even once they're subdivided, they're going to be larger than some of the other lots on Prince Street and across the street. Is that true? Lot size, no. Yeah, consistent or possibly even larger than some of the lots. Is that true? Sure. Okay. You, the report that the council has includes a site plan, is that right? And the staff has reviewed the site plan for things like setback and height and the technical requirements of the Land Development Code?
They're fine with setbacks and things like that. Further review would be conducted if it is approved in a class of name.
Okay. So any type of building then would have to be consistent with all the other technical requirements of the code? It looks like the proposal is home sizes between twelve hundred and twenty-five hundred square feet. Is that right? And is that consistent in terms of size and scale with the homes that are in that neighborhood up and down Prince Street? Could it be consistent with the newer homes built on Prince Street? There's already water and sewer available there?
Off of Prince Street, yes.
Okay, so there will be no problems connecting to utilities? No problems tapping into utilities?
Yes, there's water, city water and sewer along Prince Street.
Okay. And the site plan that's proposed by the applicant has applicant off-street parking, adequate off-street parking. Is that correct?
Per our Land Development Code, it would, yeah, single-family homes require two parking places, which would be all would be adequate in the rear, where the driveway would be, and that would be the parking required.
Great, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, Mr. Heffernan, you have it.
So, as I understand it, and Mr. Russell asked some of the questions I was going to ask. But I do have, to be, it has to be consistent, generally speaking, with the lot widths within three hundred feet or one block length, whichever is greater. And you said, within three hundred feet, it's sixty-one point six, and within one block, it's seventy-five feet. So because seventy-five feet's greater, that's the magic number.
Correct, yes.
And how does, how do you determine what one block length is?
The way we did it is the lot fronting on this lot, Hall Street, right here with Johnson Street, so these two lots are the only lots fronting it, so each one is seventy-five, which is...
So basically, his own lots are what's, alright. So there's nothing else really to compare it to on that block? And then within the three hundred feet, as I looked at it, half the lots within three hundred feet are fifty feet or less in width. Is that, would you say that's correct?
I would say.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Andrew's here as well.
Other questions from Ms. Ratchford? I don't have any. Okay, thank you.
Andrew is here as well.
Wait a minute. Mr. Russell, you want to call your, you want to call your witness? Okay. That'll be fine. He knows how to do that. That's good.
Hey, there you go.
Hey, Andrew.
Hello. Can I add something to something, because John was my contact that communicated with Shelley. It was my understanding from John, if you look at item three on the special, special use, special uses, as the residential unit shall adhere to renderings provided at council meeting, I was understood that these renderings were, because I don't have the full plans completed yet. These were just a concept that I had my architect come up with. So I don't have a full, or a hundred percent complete, complete plan. So I wanted to leave it, this is what I was looking to do with the project, or looking to do with some other things. But I did not want to a hundred percent adhere to what I had sent from our conversations. Mr. Russell, I believe that you and Shelley had talked about, these were understood to be a representative, a representative rendering, but not the actual render. Okay. Because I saw that verbiage, and I was like, I don't want to have to be pigeonholed right into that specifically. So do we need to amend anything in the special proceeding, or the comment section to?
We could add the word "concept rendering."
Thank you. That's perfect. Okay, so I think I've been in front of most all of you before, except for Mr. Seelinger. My name is Andrew Limberger. Office address is 237 Market Street, Kramer, North Carolina. So basically, I have some lots, they were originally three lots. They faced Hall Street. My intention and a reason for subdividing those into two and not three were to put two duplexes on that property. I can do that by right with both lots being over ten thousand square feet. I decided it would probably be better, better used at the time for three residential, three residential, single-family units. So that's why I have applied for this today. As she said, basically, I am my own block. I also own the property to the right, not the single-family home, but all the property to the right and behind the single-family home there, which I intend to also do something with. And all, as Peyton pointed out, all the street, all the lots on that side of the street are all fifty-foot wide. So and that's what I'm seeking, is three fifty-foot wide lots. So I have a couple findings of fact. Got finding of fact, A, the use meets all required principles and specifications of the Land Development Code and adopted land use plans. Chapter 5.4, section 2.4 of the Land Development Code states on infill lots, the minimum lot width shall be equal to the average lot widths of lots within three hundred feet or one block length, except for approval with a special use permit. So there's a process in place as a matter of right for me to meet finding of fact, A. Finding of fact, B, proposed plan, if developed according to the plan submitted and approved, will be visually and functionally compatible to the surrounding areas. I believe I have proved that, that it will be visually and functionally compatible. I have imposed some conditions to additionally aid in that cross-space construction, gable shed, hip roofs, resident size that they covered. shed, hip roofs, uh, resident size that they covered. And I would also submit that I'm filing this conditional use permit not because the homes that I build are not in question, and not because they do not meet any architectural or aesthetic requirement, because the average lot width I'm proposing is less than the average lot widths within 300 foot. So additionally, something pretty interesting is if you look at the average of all the lot widths, you come up with 60.68. If you were to add in the three I am proposing and then take an average, the new average is within 500ths of 1%. So my request is within 500ths of 1% compatible with finding of fact B to make that compatible with the neighborhood. So...and there's no frontage condition left or right, we've established that. And then finding of fact C, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety and will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property if located where proposed. And I've subdivided six larger parcels in Belmont into roughly 15 parcels since 2011, backed into invested money here in town. And I had a study done by Myles Hammerick in March of...March 20th of 2015, which basically stated that what I'm doing is consistent and does not harm the value. And I have since, for this special use request, I had Myles Hammerick review my submitted subdivision and found that that was applicable to his 2015 study, and my attorney has that information to pass out to you guys, if you'd like to see that study. So that, that was my answer for finding of fact C. So do you have...guys have any questions?
I do. If...
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
I just, are you...part of what we have to determine is, does it fit into the area? And so my question for you is, are you willing to...I know you can't commit to the design here, but can you commit that it won't be a three-story house?
Oh, for sure.
And it won't be a duplex?
Right. And then, and then also, I would like to add, I think, and I'm not an attorney, so if I'm misspeaking, John can correct me, but this, we're here because the land development code talks about the lots compatibility, not the homes compatibility. So there's no architectural or aesthetic, aesthetic conditions that I believe can be placed on someone in a town. So is that accurate or not accurate? Because I think we argued that at a last, uh, last land development code meeting.
Why don't I do you a question?
Gotcha, sorry. I was just making sure I'm not misspeaking. But yeah, uh...
I'll interpret these, too.
Yeah, thanks, man. What I plan to do is basically consistent with the things I've done in the past, and it's consistent with what I've proposed in front of you.
Yeah, I'm not worried about your architectural stuff. I just, I don't want to see a three-story building or house or duplex, because I don't think that fits.
Well, yeah, and that's, like I said, that was part of my long-term, my long-term strategy for rental property in Belmont. And not saying that I'd...I mean, if it's approved, it's, that's fine, but that's, I would rather build three single-family homes at this point.
Do you have any other...within that 300-foot radius, do you have any other...are any of the other homes yours?
Not within, not within 300 feet, yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have...where would be the nearest home that you've...
Uh, I have a vacant lot on the corner of Bryant MacLeod.
Have you built...did you build any of the homes on Bryant?
Built all of them.
Okay.
Except, yeah, I built one, two, three, four, four of the, well, five, five of the six new ones on Bryant.
Okay. It would be consistent with...
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, that's my plan.
Do you have, um, is it too early? Do you have any idea what the price point might be on these homes? Or is it too early to say?
I mean, they're probably all over half a million.
Okay.
That's just, that's just a guesstimation.
I mean, I'm talking about the homes you're going to build on these lots.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, how much were that?
Uh, I mean, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a range, but they'll probably be half a million dollars up, I would imagine.
Per house?
Yes, sir.
At 1,200 square feet?
Well, 1,200, well, understand that if someone comes to me with a 1,200-square-foot house plan, and I make the same amount of profit, then I'm going to build a 1,200-square-foot house, and it's going to be $350 a square foot.
That's right.
So, uh, and I like to also leave my options open. So what the neighborhood has was 1,200 to 2,500 square feet. I don't want to build anything over 2,500 square feet, but that was pretty much 1,200 to 2,500 encompasses the entire neighborhood. So I thought that was a good number, but I probably will not be building a 1,200-square-foot house there.
All right, so I mean, the language was changed in the conditioning to conceptually. So I guess what we're seeing here, it's your intent to build a similar product to what's represented right here.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm not looking to go mid-century modern or build anything that's trending in Charlotte at the moment.
Anybody have any other questions? Andrew?
All right, um, you want to, you want to have the, um, the two documents submitted to the record that were mentioned, Mr. Hammerick and whatever that subdivision study was? You want to offer those?
Yes, Myles Hammerick wrote out the value.
Okay, are they accepted? Yes.
Thank you, guys.
And when is that...what is that letter dated?
This is supposed to value, the letter is coming from the back, you have to show that the proposals will not substantially injure the value of the 1,200...
Yes. When did, when is the letter dated?
February 25th.
Oh, okay. I was confused as to whether you're referring to the 2015...
Mr. Hammerick's drawing some studies in Belmont regarding 2015, and he's periodically updating those towards Mr. Leinberger, and so which reason he did it.
Okay, that was what I was...because I was going to say it's 2021, and I wasn't all that keen on relying on something from 2015.
All right, before we, before we do that, were there any other questions that y'all wanted to ask Mr. Leinberger? Okay, yes, sir. Andrew? Since we're moving into the conceptual here, who will make the determination, once we have something in hand, that these are conceptually compatible to what was presented here? How would play your plan?
So kind of to answer Councilman Schrift's question in all seven years, Mr. Turner, the findings of fact don't specifically say you have to submit exactly what you're going to build. What they say, and what we have to find to approve the subdivision, is that the proposal is visually and functionally compatible with the surrounding property. And so what staff has traditionally asked applicants to produce is some type of concept of what is your intent? What's it going to look like? So that you all, as counsel, can see the scale, the size, what, how it'll fit into the property. And so the conceptual renderings are part of that. It'll show you maybe some of the building materials, it'll show you kind of if there's a front porch, where that'll be placed. The other part is the site plan, which is in your report. And so that'll show things like, in this case, Mr. Leinberger has the detached garages in back, which is, helps keep the home size down, so that when you're driving down Prince Street, you don't see a garage right in front of the house. It'll also show you where the parking is, things like that. But what the requirement then is, if you approve the special use permit, is that then the applicant be essentially consistent with the concept, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be a window in this place. And so then the staff has traditionally, and I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm sure Shelley will correct me if I'm wrong, but they've provided some latitude, as long as you're using these building materials, as long as the size, the scale is consistent with what's presented to counsel, then there is some latitude to make changes as the customer may request, or the architect may request. The good news is, when you're talking with, dealing with Andrew, is, I know you all know him, you've known him for years, you know what his work looks like, it's visually pleasing, it's something that kind of, he doesn't build everything just the same, there's always some unique flares or touches to it. And I would contend to you that people like that, even people that aren't residents of this home. It's one of the things that makes the town unique, is to have some of the homes that he builds, and, and, you know, they're noticeable. When you walk through town, or you're taking, you know, drive through town, you can sort of pick out some work that Andrew's done. And so that also, I would contend ought to give you some confidence in his judgment, you know, what, what the residents of Belmont likes, what appeals to them, and what we like as a community. So that may be more than what you're saying, but it is not like scientific or mathematical compliance, but it gives you some idea as a council, if you were to approve this, what would, what would go there.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but I'm just, I was commenting on it, because that's, it was presented conditionally, as a condition, albeit, I guess, misunderstood and corrected here, because I was kind of excited to see that, because we rarely see any commitment. It's always pure rendering. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But I mean, also...
The planning staff can monitor that. If it doesn't meet their approval or interpretation of what's, if it's approved tonight, they will, they will not move forward with a zoning permit.
So the planning staff will typically ask the applicant, can you send us some rendering so that we can show to the council? So part of the process of getting ready is the communication that was, Andrew was referring to, between the staff and between me, where we'd say, here's generally what we're thinking of for this property. So that's the background of where the renderings came from.
Are you, is this part of your closing?
This is essentially my closing, sir. I've covered everything, and the great thing about representing Andrew is he's already done most of the work for me, but he's pointed out correctly that you need to find three factors. Typically, our code does favor the development of property, it's just that when you're in a special use permit situation, you have to come and make some additional steps and some additional findings. And I would contend that he's shown that, that in terms of the size, the plan, the concept, the use letter, and just the technical things that Ms. Ratchford and staff has reviewed as far as setbacks, parking, safety things, water, that this is a good project, it's good for the area, it's certainly consistent with what the built area that is there. And so appreciate your hearing us and ask you to approve the request.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any other questions for Mr. Russell?
No.
Then you need to entertain a motion to come out of public hearing.
Come out of public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the, considering the approval of the ordinance supporting 115 and 117 Prince Street.
Okay, so the, as you know, as you recall, you're required to have three separate findings, and then if those are approved, then there'll be a motion to grant the S U P with the conditions that have been listed. So the first required finding is, the use meets all required principles and specifications of the land development code and any adopted land use plans. All in favor of that finding?
Aye.
Number two, the proposed plan, if developed according to the plan submitted and approved, will be visually and functionally compatible to the surrounding area. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Anonymous? C, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety and will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property if located where proposed. All in favor?
Aye.
Anonymous? Would someone make a motion then to grant the S U P with the listed itemized conditions?
I'll make the motion to approve the S U P with the approved itemized conditions with the one change to item three, that rendering be changed to concept rendering.
Thank you. I'll second.
Got a second?
Richardson.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Good job.
Thanks to Ms. Ratchford for her first presentation.
Yes.
Item number 10, Belmont Trolley Project update.
Thank you, Mayor. I will introduce this item and then turn it over to my good friend Ron Lovelace to give you an update on Belmont Trolley's progress. Last year, Belmont Trolley came to you during the March city council meeting and asked for authorization to, for council to release the first installment of a proposed $300,000 commitment of the city toward the Belmont Trolley, Trolley Barn and Event Center that would be paid out of five annual installments of $60,000.
Yeah. We got Nathan here, too, so...
And Mr. Presley's here, if he'll come up, just, I mean, because they're going to ask questions that I don't know the answers to.
Do you mind if I finish introducing?
I'm sorry.
I just work here, but...
Of course.
So as background information for the public, Belmont Trolley came to the council in March of last year, proposed the Trolley Barn and Event Center, and you approved the first round of funding of $60,000. You also asked that they come back to you annually during March, so you can make sure that if you are satisfied with their progress, then we would include the $60,000 in the subsequent city budget.
Yeah.
So with that, I'll turn it over to my good friend, Ron Lovelace.
My good friend. It's good to see all of you again. It's been a while, under different circumstances this time. There are lots of ways that I could split this update into pieces. I'm going to split it into four work streams to give you an update. I'm going to talk about the tracks, the trolley car, the barn, and then I'm going to talk about fundraising. I think those are the four primary areas. I'll start with the tracks. They're done. The NCDOT, you may have noticed, in the last 12 months, came into the city, replaced one out of every four, one out of every three of the railroad ties. They invested well into the six figures in drive city to clean up the tracks. I think this is important to note, because it's a, it's a significant investment in our town, and it's a signal of support and confidence in the project. So good news on the tracks. On the car, the car is obviously much further along than most aspects of this project, including the barn. In the last year, we continued at a steady rate, our work on the mechanics and on the cosmetics of the car. I think we spent $20,000 or so restoring the car, so it's continuing at a steady pace. I'm confident that will not be the bottleneck to us achieving our, our operations. The one really cool thing, and I hate that he's not here, but local Belmont middle schooler, Xander Wells, has decided to make the cosmetic restoration of the car his Eagle Scout project, which I just think is the coolest thing ever. He's decided to go all in, he's going to be doing small dollar raises around town to kind of fund that. The work will obviously not be done by him by himself, it'll be undertaken under the supervision of expert stores, but that's, that's a piece of good news. On the barn, third, the third level, the lot has been cleared, up the end of brush, the surveyors have come out, they've completed the fieldwork, and they are in the process of giving us a survey, which we will use to lay the building on top of it and produce the final design. We're talking to contractors as we speak. I know that Rob has begun conversations with custom builders. I actually called Andrew Roby as well, just to make sure that we have a couple of bids and conversations going on, which is, I think, in everybody's best interest. So that work is continuing at a pace, my plan, I think, we plan to have that done by summer, in terms of the final kind of engineering and all the rest.
Civil engineering is where we're at at the moment. Unrushed, made clear, survey's been done. Geotech was held up rain in the last couple of weeks, but geotech subsurface exploration is timed up, and as soon as it drives out there. It needs to be determined between the geology and the quality of the soil, what truly extent of cost is going to be the site. Mr. Leinberger, any other thoughts? It could be a small number, it could be a massive, these are the things that we need to be farmed up, but geotech, subsurface, grade, those are the things that we want to do. But yes, civil engineering should be generally going through the next couple of months, which will then allow the architects to go and layer the conceptual building plan on top of the site, which will then allow them to finish designing the building. The term it was, probably 75% complete following by summertime, which will allow us to go out and mark the cost of the typical construction of the site.
And one thing to note in connection with that, I think one thing that we all agree on, in terms of identifying potential donors, is we have a large number of in-kind potential donors in town. As we work with custom or whoever the contractor is, in terms of value engineering, project being created, and thinking about who our connections are with in-kind donations is something that's going to help us bring, hopefully, the cost structure down.
Well, an example of that is, is, I think we've provided a lot of the senior project of cost budget of design, I think it was about $60,000 budget. That's probably in my world, in the real world, full profit world, it's probably a hundred plus thousand dollars. We were able to go out and find all the people who wanted to donate some of their time to the project. We saved about $40,000 of our design services. We've already had commitments for steel, some of the rain, or we've had a number of vendors step up and said, when it's our time, we'll do whatever it costs.
So that's, that's the update on the barn, and I'll open it to questions in a moment. But let me hit fundraising, it's kind of the last point. The, since we met with you last time, and I think it was last May or June, Adrian would know for sure, the last time I spoke to you, we have raised $20,000 from the Travel and Tourism Board, and this board has donated another $20,000. So that's $40,000 that we've raised since the last time that we met. I met last week with representatives from the Community Foundation, who I consider to be the most professional and the most experienced fundraisers in the county. I met with them because I, I thought that their input and expertise was mandatory as we now immediately start to go out and make the hard asks of our biggest potential donors. They gave us some, some very good advice in terms of potential names and things like that that I don't want to bring up in the public forum that I'll be happy to talk about at a later time. But I do think that these asks are going to come by summertime as well. So I'm excited about that. I want to take this opportunity to address two concerns that I want to acknowledge, I want to own, and I want to just take on head on. The first is perhaps the most distressing, and that is I have heard directly from some of you and indirectly from most of the rest of you, that there are issues with communication regarding our project. This is concerning to me personally because I consider most of you to be my friends. And if you have a question, I, I hope you will never hesitate to pick up the phone and ask. But I think that it's more distressing to me because for this project to be successful, it is going to be a joint venture between the city and Belmont Trolley. There cannot be daylight between us. I mean, we're talking about the city owning the, the structure that we're going to build. We're talking about the city operating the structure that we're going to build and us operating our trolley out of it. For that to work, communication is absolutely critical. And, and it's got to be real time in order to make us faster, which I think we are, and more efficient. So to that end, and this was referenced in the letter, but one thing that, that I think is a good idea, I would like to officially invite someone from the city to join our board. It can be a non-voting, I, I'll defer to Parks, he'll probably slap my wrist after this. But I, I just think that that would be tremendously helpful in terms of getting information to this body. I think it would be even more helpful to us to hear exactly where the city is in terms of its planning and its development in the area that we're building. So I think that, that having that person on our board, even if it's a non-voting member, if Parks tells me that's the way it needs to be, that's fine. But having that person present with us would be important. I've heard incredible things about Kevin Press, both from Emily, who most of you all know, Mr. Presley, who told me great things. Would love to have him if he has the capacity, but I don't want to overstep my bounds. But Adrian, I would like to make that official invitation. Second thing that I want to address head on before I open it to questions is the lack of progress. When I came before you last May or June, whenever it was, about the memorandum of understanding, I had hoped that I would be in a different place standing before you today. I would like to have thought that the design work would have been completed. I would like to have thought that we would have had more progress on the fundraising. And I'll address each of those in turn. On the design work, I, I don't think I'd say too much when I say that every person on this board is an entrepreneur, a small business owner, which means that I not only have my own family who depends on me to produce, but I have several other families that depend on me to produce. You know, for four or five months of last year, I did not really think very much about the trolley. I was concerned about a very, very close family member of mine who is at risk of COVID. And I was concerned about the ability of my law firm to survive. And I know Mr. Heffron could, and give you some, some background on the perspective of large law firms on, on COVID. And so this, we've lost four or five months of last year, there's no way around that. We woke up, I would say, October, November, May.
I understand.
And we said, you know what, we think we're going to be okay here. I, I think that now is the time, we can re-engage and we have. But that's why candidly, the design work is not done. That being said, I don't think it has set us back too much. I don't know that we would be in a far different place if the design work had been done on time. But I, I did want to acknowledge that because I know that's a question that we have, a question we should have. Second thing, on fundraising, the impact of COVID. We went to probably our biggest potential donor, the, the donor. I'll state this, when I say, the Community Foundation said, this is your one potential donor to write a check for the entire project. Well, we went to them soon after we met with this, with this body last year. And they said, you know what, this is not the time. This is not on our radar. We are in community support mode, and you need to be too. And candidly, that was a little embarrassing, and it was true. When you're talking about the checks of the size that we're going to ask and we're going to need to support this project, and you weigh that against the burdens being borne by people who have been furloughed, layoffs, et cetera, it was not the right time to go out and do a, a seven-figure fundraiser for a project in a city. We got that feedback early on. And so we did end up, last year, I think the board at the end of the year said, you know what, we got to do something to show the city council, when we meet with them early next year, that we're serious about this project. And that's why the board gave our own dollars, money for our kids, savings, whatever, to put up the $10,000. And that's not nothing, but we're aware that, you know, we, this is the year, this is the deciding. And we're, we're engaged on that and we're eager to go forward. So with that, I want to stop, talk too much, and I want to ask you all to ask me your questions.
Well, I have several comments. First of all, you're right, this is not the time to ask for funds because we're looking at a skateboard park, and I had assured Parks and Rec and this council I would do that, but it has not been the correct time. And personally, I trust that you gentlemen are going to make sure anything that you're involved in is successful. So we're depending on you, and I don't have any doubts that that will occur. Timing, it may be slower. I want to make sure I made that clear.
Thank you for that comment.
Ron, I'd just say I don't have any issues with your fundraising or your progress right now in lieu of what you just said. I think everybody has lost time over the past year. I mean, so that's understandable. Everybody's anxious for progress, but to some extent, as with other things, it has to be tempered with being pragmatic on what the situation is on the ground.
Thank you. Appreciate your effort. Well, we, we appreciate you all for being our partners, and I, I mean that. And Adrian, I hope to connect with you later this week or as soon as your busy schedule allows, we can, we can talk about making that, that closer.
Where would you expect to be like this time next year as far as like with fundraising, the design and all that? Like, when do you come back?
The design's going to be done. If we don't have substantial progress on the fundraising.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. Where are we going to be realistically? The design work's going to be completed this summer. We're not taking out, we're going to find out whether this project's going to cost. We have a pretty good idea. This is the background that I, this is what I do for a living. And we're going to find out, I would mean in the next four months, whether this thing is really viable. And I say that because if we have site costs that just balloon to the point where it doubles the cost of our project, or if we end up in a situation that by the time you package everything up, it's a two or three million dollar project, it may be a project that, absent something really big happening, may not be able to happen. Do we believe or have any reason to believe that could be the case? No. That's why it's so important to have this design. In addition to the Community Foundation, we also talked to some other likely key donors for the project. And everybody said the same thing, first COVID, then second was, show us the numbers. Show us the design, show us the hard numbers, not the guesses, but the hard numbers. So that we can see. We don't want to commit to something that, that you come back six months later and say, look, we gave you a quarter million dollars and now you need another quarter million dollars. We wouldn't want to do that. That was in part why we also set up a donation, contribution from the city in six, five part process because there was no need for money all upfront first. And secondly, there's steps you have to take to make sure the project's viable. But let's assume by summertime, the project is, is viable, it is within the budget, it will be expected to be, then it will be packaged up, put into probably a trifle or some sort of type of presentation package that the donors would then talk to and some of the ones that we haven't reached out to yet. We will begin putting that in front of those books. And so now we'd like to think by fall, we'll have clear heart of budget for the project. And we'll also have some pretty direct feedback from some of the donors who are making, like stakeholder. We've, we've, we've been able to make this work for five years. We've bought about $200,000 worth of assets. And we've been able to do it by friends and family, contribution from the city. But at this point, it's going to take, it's going to take a couple of heavy winters to be able to make this thing viable. And Ron and I both discussed it, and we're willing to take some risks. We're willing to personally guarantee some construction contracts if we have the means in place to take us out in the future. What we're not willing to do is sign and hope that some are shown, so. With all that said, where are we going to be in the fall? Where are we going to be in the fall? We're going to have a project that this is, this is a bank of the town. We're going to know that we have a couple of key donors that we can be able to help them to like this. We'll be able to come back to you maybe in the fall, early winter and say, here it is. I think that's part of why Ron suggested to you, and we've all talked to the group, this is our gift to the city. This is our gift to the community. None of us get anything out of this except for the pleasure of seeing something really cool happen to the town all night. You're going to own the building. It's going to be a community center. It's going to be an educational facility. It's also going to help the public. And so because it's ultimately going to be a city asset, we feel stronger. Because we're at this pivotal point, we think that having somebody from the city staff actually be involved in our monthly board meetings, be able to report back to Adrian or whoever wants to keep you updated, probably now is a good time to move.
I am, you, you make a, a, a point about the fall, and, and I've read your letter, and there are some statements about what might be done by the summer. And, you know, maybe this won't be necessary if we have a, a board member who would, who would take the information back to us. But it does seem to me that at least there are some things, having read the letter, that, that might be established maybe within six months so that if you do come back to us in September and October, you know, it seems like you discuss in, in the letter you submitted, the, the completion of a project business plan, a formal fundraising plan, you know, some of this restoration fundraising through the Eagle Scout project. It seems like those things should be in place in six months. And, you know, we can come, if you were to come back in September and October and report on that, you know, those seem like viable benchmarks that I'm not talking about you have to raise X dollars. But, you know, you yourself have, have indicated in your letter that you expect those plans to be in, in place in, in, by summer. And so, you know, maybe we could have a, a report at that time as to the progress and, and whether those benchmarks have been met.
I would be fine. No, no problem. And in fact, I, I will just open up anytime you want. I will show up and you can hear me talk. It would be terrific. But I do think that makes sense. October, the October meeting would be a good time to come back and that page. We're happy to do that as long as somebody can, can remind me that I'm on the agenda.
This concept of having somebody from the city involved, and I don't disrespect Adrian or Ron, because they've been champions of this since the first day we started bringing this idea up. But having a staff member assigned to the group, I think is important, not just from a communication perspective, but we're getting ready to get in some pretty detailed stuff. Some, some things that the city's going to have to weigh in on, the city's going to have to back us on, whether it be with D M T or whether it be with how, how the documents are ultimately set up, with how the ownership of the building, operating agreement, because in fact, a part of what these key donors want to see is not only our capital budget, how it's going to be built, they also want to see how's the joint sustain itself long-term? How's the structure of the building going to be owned? How does trolley fit into the building? What rights do they have? So I think we're going to be getting into some more technical issues that if we have somebody from the city that's involved and they're not being brought up to speed every six months, they're instead integrally integrated into how the city is going to be.
I'm trying to remember how many passengers that trolley was going to have.
How many passengers? About 20?
20. So if you go to the abbey and stuff like that and have students drive down, it should?
Sometime in the future, that'd be, that'd be the vision, yeah. I know it's not short of, of, of.
I know. I know. Exactly. Okay.
But you know, Mayor, you bring up a good point, and I want to share with you. In the last couple of months, Charlotte Trolley's contacted me and asked me, they're having some delays associated with their future project in Charlotte, and they don't want to see their car continue to sit idle. And we've been approached with a question. And it's funny, Adrian and I went and asked them, right, to use it, what, three or four years ago? And they admittedly said, no. Scott Paul, he's the one that said no the most, the loudest. There may be an opportunity to bring a second car up here. We're actually designing the building to be able to hold three cars. So whatever that one car holds, don't get caught up in that because we're thinking short-term and long-term. And two cars could be in tandem on one side and one car on the other side, all of them pulled out for events. The other thing that I've been hearing, as y'all know, with the trolley, and I've been tied into some of what's going on there. And don't kid yourself, Katz is watching what's happening with this project. But I've had two different calls from people that said, tell me how real this Belmont Trolley project is. As y'all know, they had a meeting a week ago, and, and part of that meeting was, is we, the discussion right now is, do we stop like rail at Park Street or do we head all the way up to Main Street? And I think that it's imperative to get that to Main Street.
Yeah.
Not Park Street.
Yeah.
And I had two calls that said, how real is this? And, and do you think that trolley cars are going to run at Main Street? Because that's a big, man, it seemed like a big deal, but that's a big deal to them. We have a trolley car that has the potential to run on those tracks. And even multiple in Mount Holly, but at least out of Belmont Abbey and going into downtown the other way, that's a note that they're down with. That's a good deal. They're watching. Even the smallest of the four watches.
Ron, let me ask you a question because we introduced the possibility of two or three cars. Was the initial design, if I recall correctly, it was for one car and then meeting space? Are you going to have to expand the footprint of the building to accommodate?
It was always, it was always able to handle three.
It was? Okay.
Yeah, it's a 5,000 square foot building. It's not a huge building to begin with, but no, when it was built, the original conceptual designs of the building were to have two cars in on end in tandem and then one in the office and the back corner, restroom, and so forth. So nothing's changed with that either. We always envisioned more than one car running.
Okay, well, I seem to remember something about meeting space in, in there also.
Cars to be pulled out of the building, under, whether it be one car or three cars. The cars get pulled out of the building and it opens up the entire space as a meeting venue or educational facility.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it's a good, you know, I, I think the, the barn and everything, it's a, the whole thing's a good project. And I think the barn is a good deal for the city. You know, I just think that we are, you know, and we understand everything that, that's happened in the past year. You know, we just want to make sure this isn't a, a trolley to the land of make-believe from Mr. Rogers' neighborhood. And so Adrian, I guess my question to you is what, what, I mean, this is good discussion. You know, I, I think this is, is making progress, but what, what do we need to do today?
So what you asked last year is to have the, the trolley board come back and give you an annual progress report. As you'll recall, we included the $60,000. So you, you authorized the $60,000 last year that was paid out of last year's budget. In the current year's budget, we included $60,000 for this project with the caveat that the trolley board would come back to you. If you're satisfied with their progress, then you would, you would authorize me to spend the $60,000 on the project. And then we would include, do the same thing next year, we'd include it in next year's budget. They would come back to you either this fall or, or next spring and, and report out. So if you're satisfied with the progress that's being made, the money is in the current year's budget. We could, we could go ahead and write a check to Belmont Trolley. If we don't do that before June 30th, that money goes away. So you can either make the decision now, or if there's something else you need from the trolley board before the first of June, then we need to let them know and then come back so that we could authorize that funding so that we don't hold up their progress. And then we would do this again. I, I, I believe in this project. As, as Councilwoman Stowe said, you've got a great board, you're all committed to it. You're going to want a first-class project. I, I think that, you know, if, if there's even a hope that this helps us get the Silverline Belmont Station closer to Main Street, and then you've got a trolley getting connectivity between downtown Belmont. And then you've got a trolley getting connectivity between downtown Belmont and the Silver Line Station, that's a total game changer for us. Uh, so, so the potential for that is huge. Uh, I certainly think it's worth the, the funding that we're.
Well, I mean, from my individual perspective, I mean, based on the conditions of the last year, I'm satisfied with the progress. And you had said this year was your make or break year. I think next year is really gonna be the year to move forward. I mean, I, I like the idea of it coming up to Main Street, the light rail, and then tying in with this. But I mean, that opens up the discussion of the parking deck, I think, again. Because it's great that it comes downtown, but if we want people to use the light, the trolley to get to light rail, they're gonna have to have someplace to park their car.
As far as the representative on their board, is that somebody that we would need to appoint? Or is that, like, I'm just wondering the mechanics of that. Like, we need to authorize you to do that or?
Yes, if you, if an elected official would prefer to be on the board, I would defer to you. If not, then I would, if you wanted to be a staff level position, then I would certainly allow Kevin to serve.
They seem to have an affinity for Kevin.
Yeah, I think, I think Kevin would do a really good job.
I think there, it's starting to get technical, so having somebody like Kevin, uh, on that board would make a lot of sense.
Just to respond to his question, I think it ought to be an ex officio non-voting member.
That's one of those. Right. I think it's a, it's a fantastic project. I, I, you know how much I, I care about it. So it's, this isn't, this isn't, I mean, this is a once in a fifty-year type deal, I think. It's special, so.
So Adrian, do you need a formal motion from us to authorize you to write the check? Is that what you need?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we authorize you to expend the funds and write the check. I think this is seed money and we certainly hope it all works well. But if we don't do our part, they're not gonna be able to fundraise. So that's a big piece up to me.
I'll second the motion.
This will be unique to Belmont, yeah. Well, we've got a second motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Very good, John. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call Kevin.
You can pick up your check at the back.
It's gonna be one of those.
You can take the trolley.
It's gonna be one of those big checks.
Give it to Kevin.
Appreciate you guys. Uh, next item on the agenda is item number eleven. Consider the adoption of an ordinance for demolition of the residential structure at one fourteen Morning Glory Avenue.
And building stuff, now it's destroys.
Plus three, minus two.
And Lindsay, you've done a terrific job.
So we're in at one?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. So tonight I have, um, two ordinance considerations. So the first one would be, um, considering adopting an ordinance for the demolition of the residential structure at one fourteen Morning Glory. It has been vacant for over a decade and continue to deteriorate to the point of it now being hazardous to the safety of others. Um, available records show that this has been an ongoing minimum housing case since January of twenty eleven. Records also show that no actions have been pursued after October of twenty twelve. So in September of last year, we determined it was necessary to restart the process, um, to allow for proper procedures and due diligence. After the required notices and inspection and hearing, the owner was issued an order to repair or demolish on November eighteenth. And he had until February sixteenth of this year to meet compliance of this order. And as of February seventeenth, he's failed to do so and it has remained untouched. He made no, no actions on it at all. This, there's also a possibility that this, the ownership of the house could change hands on or around March fifth. I received a call last week from Quick Fix Real Estate that was notifying me of this. But I explained to them, you know, that this has been ongoing for a decade and they can't guarantee anything that, that's gonna happen on their end. So I would presume we can continue with it.
I guess it wasn't a quick enough fix.
So that's all I have for that one.
Is, is the door still, it won't close on that property?
I don't even think it's attached to the actual house.
Well, should we, I think we should, I mean, the, the item on the agenda is for this property. So I think we need to discuss and vote on this project, or this property before we move to Todd Street.
So in your, in your packet on page one ninety-one, you've got the, uh, order to demolish the property at, with the structure at one fourteen Morning Glory Avenue. Um, and, uh, Lindsay was able to get three quotes for the construction. Because as you know, with our process, the city will demolish the property, will put a lien on the property, will demolish the structure, put a lien on the property and be reimbursed, uh, if the property does change hands.
Yeah.
Uh, it looks like the low bidder was Richard Lake Construction and Crane LLC at two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So we recommend approval of this ordinance and we would award that construction, or the demolition contract to Richard Lake Construction and Crane.
Do you know how quickly they can get the bulldozers out there?
Do you know how quickly they could get the project, or the house demolished?
So once, once we're able to get approval, I have to make sure with the utilities and the cut off and the powers cut off. And then I believe they, I, they should be able to have it done before our next meeting.
Okay.
And they clean it up too, haul everything away?
Yes, sir.
They're just seeking a motion to approve the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Charlie, I'll do the favor.
So you have a motion and a second, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need a motion to.
We got it, we got it. You just need to call for the vote.
Call it.
Call to vote. Aye.
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 All in favor, say aye. Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. And then we have another property too.
And we have one more, three twenty-five Todd Street extension.
One more. And it's essentially the same scenario. So this one was also, um, this is three twenty-five Todd Street extension. It was also an ongoing minimum housing case since January of eleven. And there were no actions taken after February of twenty twelve. So in September, we determined it was necessary to restart the process so that we could allow for proper procedures and due diligence. After the notices, inspection and hearing, the owner was issued, um, a repair or demolish order on November eighteenth. He had until February sixteenth of this year to meet compliance. And as of the seventeenth, he's failed to do so and it has also remained untouched. This one is worse off than the last one. It's barely even hanging on, on the backside of it. So it's definitely hazardous. And that would be all for that.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, you have an ordinance for the demolition of the structure. Uh, Lindsay was able to get three quotes. And again, Richard Lake Construction and Crane LLC was the low bidder at three thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Move to approve the ordinance?
All right.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a question, Lindsay.
Yes, sir.
Who was the lady that says they know me on this thing? I don't know who that is.
Say that one more time.
A lady that said they knew me personally, acquainted with me?
Oh, that.
I don't remember signing anything.
Well, that's just, uh. Are, are you talking about like the, the, the notary seal? Um, you know, that's, that's just to approve, um, when, when you sign the ordinance, to testify to that.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's just.
Oh, you're talking about down here. Okay, I see.
Okay.
Hey, you're doing a really good job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, acquaintance.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next we have on the agenda, consider the award of a five-year solid waste contract. Bill Carroll is gonna take over that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and as Public Works Director Bill Carroll could talk about our, uh, solid waste contract, which is, our current contract ends this fiscal year. So we'll need a new five-year contract effective, uh, July first.
Thank you, city manager, mayor and council. So, um, as you probably read in my memo included with your packet, I laid out to the city manager and to you, the lowest bidder, which was Waste Pro USA, with the addendum that we utilize existing carts throughout the city. This was in our discussions at the ESB meeting we had, a joint discussion, as well as the city council meeting, or city council retreat, I'm sorry. And we tend to be in agreement that utilizing existing city carts was fine. And, uh, with that addendum, that, that would be the lowest bidding price. So, uh, you see those, those in figure one of my memo. Of course, this is an increased cost from our current contract. And, uh, we have discussed at our retreat, as well as at the ESB, uh, joint meeting, bringing in-house leaf collection services and yard waste collection services. So, uh, I included that price estimate that we, uh, came up with after review. Um, that includes personnel costs, that includes equipment costs, and that includes landfill fee costs. And it actually came out a little bit, uh, lower priced in our estimates. So I'm asking that you approve, uh, Waste Pro USA as our vendor, allow the city manager and the Public Works Director to negotiate that contract with them and, uh, get all the fine details laid out. While also allowing us to prepare planning for bringing leaf services and yard waste pickup in-house and purchasing the equipment.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Bill? We're good.
Uh, well.
I know there was some discussion about recycling. And I guess, I can't remember where we landed on that, but I'm assuming we, we decided to go ahead and continue our recycling.
I included that in the memo as a recommendation, given our high utilization. Um, the ESB board joint discussion we also had, it seemed that recycling is popular and we should, we should maintain it. It did go up in cost, but not nearly enough to warrant, uh, removing it. And also our, uh, our fees associated with any contamination are next to none, uh, as indicated by Waste Pro. So there's really no, um, backside to continue the program, in my opinion.
And there is, oh, go ahead.
Let me ask you, because I think I remember from one of our discussions with Waste Pro, their tipping fees had gone up to where they said the recyclables were just being taken to the dump and dumped. Are we still in that position? I mean, I know we've got a high participation rate. It makes everybody feel good to recycle, but if the ultimate outcome is it's still going to the dump, it's not really fulfilling its mission.
Well, they have indicated that they would be taking it to a recycling center, um, assuming, you know, they're able to allow it there. They've made no indication to me, and then the contract lays out that they would take it to a landfill. So they, and then they would certainly have to get staff approval before they could do that.
And that's, um, that seemed to be the main driver of the, uh, cost increase was the increase in recycling. And, and is that indicative of broader trends towards, uh, recycling services?
Yeah, I mean, in some of the area, I mean, some communities around us have decided to eliminate the pro, programs. But I think a lot of that's due to some of the problems they have with precipitation and contamination, which as I said, is not a problem in Belmont, fortunately. I mean, hopefully, if we continue to, uh, have good education, get the council involved in educating the public, as well as getting Waste Pro involved and educating the public, I think we will have a successful, successful program.
Do we, do we know if that's the case with these other cities? Are we speculating about?
As far as?
Contamination, participation?
I'm speculating. I don't have any specific data on their contamination rates.
Because I know.
I just know that what they, what they've indicated when they, when they sent a news release out about recycling being eliminated. And you, if you recall, like Gastonia, for instance, their recycling, they brought it to like centers, like recycling centers throughout the town. Which the main reason you do that is to prevent contamination. Because then you have a staff member that's present on site to look at the stuff that's brought from the, by the residents. But given that we have lower contamination rates, we don't necessarily need to do that.
So I mean, within our local area, I know Gastonia has dropped and some of the other small municipalities I think have dropped. What's the, what's the trend around here? It seems like a lot of them have declined to continue with their recycling.
I, I mean, it seems, I, I, the only one I know of is Gastonia eliminating it, unless you know of others. Um, some have brought it into, to different vendors and services, but, uh, you can certainly enlighten me if there's any you've heard of. But the program costs, you know, since it's a five-year cycle, you know, every five years is, you know, potential for it to go up. I think the cost increase for Belmont was actually quite minimal compared to, I think, what other municipalities have seen.
That's what my question's gonna be, that even though it's gone up, um, i- it seems as though that was going to be inevitable anyway, that the cost of these services and the contracts are going up.
I mean, due to the national, na, na, national rates of inflation and, and cost, you know, it goes up.
And you're comfortable that this, you know, is the best bid. Uh, it's the lowest bid. We get to keep the, if you, if you wanna keep your yard cart, you can, or your cart, you can keep it. Um, and you've, we've obviously talked about this at our retreat. You've talked about it, uh, before the Environmental Sustainability Board. So it's been fully vetted and, and in your judgment, this is the best, uh, option for the city.
Yes, sir.
Um, what are we thinking about? Do you think we're making any changes to bulk waste? I know we're taking yard waste and leaf collection in-house. Um, are there gonna be any changes to bulk pickup, do you think?
No, not, we're not with what we, they bid on. They bid on continuing the quarterly bulk pickup process. Um, so I, that would be staying the same. And I think the public's have been educated well on that. So hopefully that would be, can, continue to be a successful program.
And I know one of the elephants in the room with Waste Pro has been their customer service and accountability. And I know we've discussed some sort of in-house, um, you know, point of contact or, or some sort of first line of, of, of contact. Um, do we have any specifics on that or is that TBD, to be determined down the road?
Well, well, we're planning on utilizing current staffing, uh, to answer customer service calls that come in, um, while still utilizing Waste Pro's call system and their online system. But we would like to be the first point of contact when possible. So we're gonna encourage that. And, uh, we'll of course have to see operationally how that impacts our services. We won't know until we try it, but we think we can do it with current personnel and with current resources.
Okay, because if that improved, I think that would improve a lot of people's disposition towards the, the program and, and towards Waste Pro.
Yes, yes.
I think us taking over the leaf collection is gonna help clean up that problem exponentially. But, you know, we also had discussed, and I guess I have a blind spot on this, about us taking over the bulk pickup as an on-call, um, type of process. So we don't have people beginning to put out their mattresses and refrigerators a week ahead or so. And, you know, we've got this debris field all through Belmont for, for that time period. Um, again, I, I guess, like I said, I had a little blind spot there. I didn't know where we landed on that, because we did have a good discussion about it. I mean, I think Mount Holly does that on-call type service. Um, you know, for me, I've been doing a lot of remodeling, so I've got a, I've got a stove, a fridge, um, sinks, things like that would be great to be able to call somebody.
We can pick up your fridge if you need it picked up. We do offer that service.
So, so we do, Waste Pro currently has a, an on-call option. So we have the quarterly bulk items. If you had, if you're doing remodeling or spring cleaning and it didn't follow on the week of the bulk item, you can contact Waste Pro and they will send you, they will go out and do a separate collection at, and there's a fee for it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what, and that, so I don't recall us talking about doing that, uh, for bulk. But I do recall us discussing that for leaf and yard waste. So we would hit the, uh, the primary areas and if we, on the regular schedule. And if we see that people are putting out yard waste, we're able to do it, we're able to respond more quickly, um, by doing it in-house to go. If we see a pile of leaves the day after leaf collection or the week after leaf collection, uh, or yard waste collection, we can, we can go out and, and, and Bill can send his staff out to get it. Whereas now, we've reported to Waste Pro and they will hopefully get it the next cycle, which could be two weeks or, or longer.
I'm pretty sure we touched on, uh, bulk items. I mean, I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but.
I, I recall the answer being that it is offered. You just have to call and then schedule it. That was what I recall the conversation. I don't know if it took any further, but it was, do we have an on-call option? And it was, we do have an on-call option.
Yeah, I think that was what I recall as well.
Yeah, we, we could not afford to do bulk, to, to purchase the equipment and run bulk item for the cost, even the, the increased cost that Waste Pro's doing.
Is the fee that Waste Pro charges for the on-call for bulk, is that changing or will that be the same? Or did they not, is that not part of this contract?
Yeah, that's not a part of the city contract.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would be individually for, for resident. Who would, who would want that service?
I'm happy with the changes. I think, I like living in a town where we can recycle and I, I think bringing the leaf stuff in. stuff in-house is good. I think the quarterly pickup's very convenient, and, you know, outside of that, people can kind of figure out their own timeline, and I think the on-call option's good, and I was pleasantly surprised with the garbage contract, so it looks good.
And I will, I will note, just so y'all are aware, that the, we're gonna be enforcing their monthly reporting requirements, and making sure we hold them to that standard, and review the data that they provide us.
I think things are gonna get a lot easier with the leaf collection in-house, as far as keeping the city clean, and causing the customer service. You know, I mean, I, I will say that I'm, I wish that Waste Pro could handle their own customer service, and do it in a timely, professional manner, and that the city not be put in a position where you've gotta dedicate staff time to answer and deal with service failures by a vendor. I mean, I just, I don't like that aspect of it at all.
So, do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the solid waste contract with, with Waste Pro, and I, along with that, should I, do we authorize the purchase of the equipment for taking leaf collection in-house?
I'll second.
And, and yard waste.
What was it?
And yard waste.
And yard waste.
A little favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have committee reports. Adrian?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the next six items under reports are just reports from boards and committees. You've got the watershed review board report from February the first, the historic preservation advisory board from February the 10th, the Main Street Advisory Board from February the 18th, the downtown Belmont Development Association report from February the 18th, environmental sustainability board reports from their meetings on February the 9th and 16th, the planning and zoning board report from February the 18th, and then for the managers' report, I've got a couple quick items. Some upcoming meetings, you had asked to meet with representatives from CATS to talk about the Silver Line Transit Project and the Transit Order Development, or TOD, planning effort that's underway. That will be at your regular March meeting, I mean, your March workshop meeting, which is March the 15th, that, of course, is open to the public. Hopefully, folks were able to do the virtual meeting that CATS presented for their public input a week or so ago, but they will come and, and have a special meeting with us to answer, to give an update on, on the Belmont portion of that, and answer any questions you have about the light rail and the TOD planning for the redevelopment of the Wilkson Corridor associated with, with transit, and that'll be, again, on Monday, March the 15th, at four o'clock in here. It's budget season, and so the department heads are gathering all their requests, and we're doing our revenue projections. We'd like to have the first budget workshop on Monday, March 22nd, at four o'clock in this room. This will be primarily talking about revenue projections and the tax rate that Council members are asked about during the retreat. So, the, the first one will be kind of high level, and then we'll get into more specifics as we get through the, the budget process. But again, that would be Monday, March 22nd, at 4:00 p.m. in here. And finally, for upcoming meetings, we do want to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for this project, Saturday, April the 3rd, at 10:00 a.m. Had some good news this afternoon, and it, it seems that we have now cleared all the hurdles with the contractor, we're able to, to get all that wrapped up. We will spend the next month or so closing on the USDA loan, so that's, we're wrapping up this project, so we'd like to have an official ribbon-cutting ceremony, Saturday, April 3rd, at 10:00 a.m.
That's gonna be great.
Obviously, here. And then, just as a follow-up to your, your workshop back in February on the TIA, we'll send all the information to our, our legislative delegation. I'm working with one of my colleagues in Wake County on similar requests that they're making of their delegation, so we can have some coordinated efforts. There seems to be some additional interest within Gaston County to partner on, on some sort of ask of our delegation, so I know we've got a short time to get that to the delegation, but we are working on that, and so hopefully, we'll, we'll have at least something to ask. You know, we, it's up to the, to the delegation to support it, but we will have something, because if, if we don't have the authority to require off-site traffic improvements, then obviously, that's gonna result in congestion, and therefore, will hinder our economic development. So, we want to find some solutions for our, our transportation issues. And then, I won't go over it, but you do have, I'm sorting on page 222, kind of a checklist of the items that we're working on that are follow-up from the retreat. So, we will keep this as kind of a running tally of what we've, what we've done, accomplishing the, the goals and the objectives from the retreat, so I'm excited that our Rocky Branch Park project is underway. I was out there last week, and it's gonna be just phenomenal. I'm looking forward for y'all coming out there and seeing it when it's a little bit farther along, so thank you for that. That's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, next we have other business. Ryan, you wanna start out?
Um, I don't have any other business. I think things are going well.
Okay. Richard?
Okay, yeah. I know we've got some repair work to do. I've seen a lot of potholes in Belmont on our streets. I know we've had a lot of rain, we need to stay on top of those. You know, one thing, I mentioned this during the meeting, but I think this lawn project pointed out that we need to consider sticking with our codes whenever possible. You know, the eight-foot sidewalk on Wood Lawn, project couldn't happen if we, if we enforced that. They want to expand the project, and it looks like an eight-foot side is now not only feasible, but it's gonna be done. So, we have these things in our code for a reason, maybe we need to, when we're in deliberations and consideration, really think about sticking closer to those. The meeting with CATS, based on what Rob Presley said, I think a good question to them would be their level of interest in our trolley, and why. Maybe get them to tell us what their perspective on the trolley is, and what it brings, and what it will do for them, and what it will do for us. Meeting, our last meeting, and listening to Representative Torbit, you know, one, one thing that's always bothered me is that we have limited authority, and we have to go and essentially seek special dispensation from the legislature to do things which we could do under home rule. You know, I don't know how we would get that ball rolling in the area, whatever, but I think looking into home rule would be something that should interest us. The Belmont-Mount Holly connector, I was talking to somebody about that, they, they called me about the Dell Web development, and, you know, we're talking about that, and, you know, he, he came up with it, and we had discussed it, that we need to rebrand that. And that's something I think we need to have ready to roll out. I don't know who comes up with that name, or how we come up with it, but it really, I think, this is an important road, and I think we've gotta brand it properly, and get it out there into the public, and let them know what this road could potentially mean for Belmont as another artery, parallel artery to South Point Road.
Parallel artery.
That might be it. Sounds a little medical, but, but I think that's something that's important. You know, we're, we're looking at, for lack of a better term, the Pittsinger property being developed, and, you know, for people to understand that with that development comes segments of this road, which will take us to 85, which will bleed off a lot of traffic, you know, that's coming through Belmont. So, those, those are just a few things that kind of cross my mind. I'm done.
The jail lot artery will bleed off.
No pun intended.
What's that?
Bleeding off.
You know, we still have those rules of procedure that, that Mark and I worked on late spring last summer, and related to that, I know the planning board has recently focused on some of their rules for public hearing after they've had some lengthy meetings, and we've had one, and probably have more on the horizon with some of these projects, and maybe, I don't know if we have any particular rules for, for public hearings, but I know the planning board is, is talking about limiting presentations to 15 minutes, and maybe that's something we should look at. Obviously, you know, everyone needs to be well-versed on that beforehand, but some of these endless presentations, you know, and I've said this before, if, if you can, if you get 30 minutes to argue to the North Carolina Supreme Court, surely, you can present a rezone petition to the Belmont City Council in 15 to 30 minutes.
15?
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, with, with questions and everything, but that's just maybe something that we can look to tighten up as, as we start to get some of these projects. And, you know, another thought that occurred to me is, as, as we start to get more of these code enforcement cases, because our new code enforcement officer is doing such a good job, maybe we need to increase the code enforcement budget if we're gonna have some, some of these demolitions to sort of get through some of these housing situations that are just really, really dangerous. So, that was just a, a thought. And the only other thing I have is, you know, just in terms of, of public outreach, I know there's been a lot of emails to, to council members over the last week. You know, I'm, I'm always happy to respond, but I, I, I think there was a flyer put out with people's emails addresses on them, and my email address was spelled incorrectly. So, you know, I apologize if I didn't get back to anyone, but I can only respond to the emails I receive. So, I just throw that out there. My name's Hefferin, with, with one N. That's all I have.
Well, I covered it for you, because my, my name is first on the flyer, so I got the majority of calls and emails, I'm sure. So, but we'll trust that the four yards has been good to their community and good to our community, so we will trust that they will continue to do the same as they would from Academy Bowl, so that's all I'll say about that part. But as the, as a parent, we take pride in what our children do. As a teacher, I take pride in what my students do. Wes Clanton is one of my former students, and he was a good guy in high school, and I'm so thrilled that he did what he did, but it is not a surprise, so I wanted to make sure, because I don't take credit for it, but I certainly take pride in it. Bye.
You're done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd like to second Jim's suggestion on the rules of procedure. I think that is something we could probably benefit from, and I think brevity is an oft-unappreciated trait, so whatever we can do to encourage that, I think would definitely be worthwhile. I also just would like to acknowledge the deluge of emails I received over the last week. You know, I was out of town for most of the weekend, so if I did not respond to anyone, it was inadvertent, but I did put some stuff on my Facebook page up here, interested in reading that. And, oh, on the, the special use permits with the lot widths, I know we've talked about this before, it's, right now, it's just the straight average of the surrounding lots and stuff, and there's some other, perhaps more statistically relevant ways of looking at that. I wouldn't necessarily consider that an urgent priority, but whenever we've got some time in a workshop, it might be worth talking through that, you know, because there's probably a couple other ways for you to look at it versus just a straight average that I think would be a little bit more helpful, because like with the example tonight, where there's one lot that was like 14 feet, and the other one was like 300 something.
Yeah.
An average is basically useless in that situation, so I think that's probably something we should look at eventually. That's it for me.
Since these two mentioned the procedures, can we figure out something for emails that come in for zoning issues? Because if, you know, for example, with Dell Web, if we get 150 emails, do you plan on reading those at the meeting? Or is there a way we can get those emails ahead of time and read them ourselves? Because that could take a long time, potentially, just, and it's a lot easier for somebody to shoot off an email and have you read it than them to read it. It's not that I don't want them read, it's just 100, 100 emails at two minutes, certainly take away from the discussion time. So, are we allowed to do that?
If they're submitted as public comment, you mean, or just general emails? If they're just generally, like what we've been getting the last three or four days regarding the, the predyfield issue, those are just general emails that are not public comments, and, you know, and I've been responding to, to all the ones that I've received, and you all are copied on those. If it's submitted as a public comment as part of the rezoning, I mean, they're part of the record, so I would assume that I would need to read them, or somebody needs to read them, maybe. Shelley's got a more pleasant voice than I do, so maybe she can, maybe we can, we can tag-team them, but, but if they're, if they're entered as part of the record, then they need to be, need to be read.
Can you, if there's a recurring theme in them, just as we do with speakers, can you partial read them and say, this, the remainder of this email addresses issues which have been previously expressed?
What we can do is maybe have a cutoff time, maybe noon of the council meeting day, and that way, we'll have them all, and we can go through and kind of sort them, and if, and if we see that somebody did like a form letter, for example, and you got 100 things that say the same thing, we could just say, here's all the same thing. So, we, you know, we could, we could, if we have a hard cutoff, it's a noon of the council meeting, which we'll advertise, you know, well in advance, then that would help us organize the comments.
I would speculate that the upcoming months are gonna bring a deluge of emails, and public comment, public comment as well.
And, and I would rather have 100 emails than 100 people crowding into this building, so, as long as...
Under current conditions.
Under current conditions.
That's right.
Yeah, under current conditions, yes. When all, when all disease and all bad things are over, then we can, we can pack it out, but, you know, under...
I have been working on coming up with some rules around it, that you guys will see eventually. Is there any, because there are some cities and municipalities that limit the amount of time they allocate for public comment, or a public hearing. Is there any interest in that, having included it, like not included in it, even look at it? I mean, the county, Gaston County, limits, I think it's 30 minutes, the public comment period, and then maybe the amount of public, like during a public hearing as well. Do you want information on that? Because I provide information.
I mean, I always want information. I, I don't know, I'm, you know, I always err on the side of more. You know, I, I wouldn't want anyone to think that, that their voice is not being heard, or not, we're not interested in it, but I'd be interested in the information, and then we can weigh the different policies.
Yeah.
And, and Ryan, speaking of procedures, you brought that back, I'll, I'll bring it back to you, are, are you gonna come up with a policy on the private...
Yeah, I, I got information from Adrian yesterday or today. I had reached out to Zip, or to Adrian, to reach out to Zip to find out other projects in our area, and how they've been done, so you have like the Rotary Pavilion in Gastonia, Martha Rivers Park, and all of them have had different things, so I wanted to kind of build a case around why it's a good thing. And then, I spoke with Claudina today, or yes, all my days go together, it's Monday, so today. So, I spoke with her today, and then at the next Zoom Parks and Rec meeting, I'm gonna get some feedback from them, and then I should be able to put some stuff in writing for you guys to, to shake out.
Okay. Parks, as, as far as procedure goes, are we not under more or less Robert's rules? Are we, is that our default position, or is that what our operative position is?
And I think in the rules of procedure that, that we've submitted to Adrian, I think one of the last provisions is, to the extent these rules don't touch it, Robert's rules applies.
Yeah. It's more like fine-tuning them than...
You're tweaking Robert's rules.
Before we conclude the meeting, I want to, again, thank everybody for all their prayers and thoughts that we've had for my wife and myself. I, I appreciate that so greatly, you have no idea how much I appreciate that. God bless you, God bless all of you, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Do we have a motion to...
I'll motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting to adjourn.